So those are 2018.
Yeah.
Excellent. So this is the November 20th meeting of the Finance, Budget and Audit Committee. We had three items on the agenda. One was any public comments. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak, we'll hear those at the beginning of our agenda. And we'll start doing that from now on on the Finance Committee meetings. We'll make sure that there's space for anybody in the public that wants to talk or wants to, you know, let us know about something, we'll be happy to hear from them.
Sure.
And we'll follow the same council rules with five minutes per speaker. And if we decide we want to allow additional time, then we can talk about that at the time. The second topic was city finances. So we have our auditor here today who's going to kind of provide an update for us on just some key topics in the city. And the last thing, just an update on Norwood Community Television. I wanted to make sure we specifically call that out to ensure that everything's good with them when it comes to getting the funding. I know that there's some issues with broadcasting, so we'll talk about that as well at the end. So, yeah, is there anybody in the public that would like to comment here? So, hearing none, we'll go ahead and go off to the second topic, city finances, and we'll go ahead and turn it over to our city auditor, Jim Siff.
Thank you, Mr., I guess President of the, no, Chairman.
Councilmember.
Chairman.
That's great.
There you go. So, and were you able to log on to eGov?
I was not, but I will try it as soon as we get out of here.
Okay. Just want to make sure you got your new password.
Excellent.
The, the main reason, from our standpoint, the biggest thing that we've been working on in the auditor's office is preparing appropriation changes for the end of 2018 and putting together appropriations for 2019. And we've got both of those documents, including worksheets here. We did send out copies of the worksheet. There have been some changes, specifically one to the 2018 and several to the 2019, which we'll discuss as we kind of move through that worksheet. What we brought is two different documents for each year, for 2018, just a one-page document, which is all of the changes to make to the current appropriations, and its attached worksheet, which, if you look in the top right side, it says as of 11/8/18, but on the top right it says appropriation changes, it's a little cut off there, and it's a five-page worksheet. The other one at the top says 2019 Permanent Appropriations, Exhibit A, and its worksheet is the one that, the front page has nearly blank columns on the right-hand side. The reason we change appropriations at this point of the year, we typically do it throughout the year as we find keys that are underfunded and we have to put money in to purchase things that tend to come up as surprises. Other times, we have funds that either underperform in their revenue or overperform in their revenue, and we need to adjust the appropriations. And when we use the word appropriations, we're meaning the word budget. We are, appropriations is the legal word for the budget amount that is in a key. And within the government, you don't spend cash, you spend appropriations, you spend your budget. So it doesn't matter if you have an extra $200 in revenue coming into a fund. If that money is not appropriated, you can't spend it. So typically, we do several adjustments throughout the year. However, the auditor of state in our fiscal emergency wanted to wait until we closed out October and try to do all of the changes pretty much at once. That being said, there may be, as we approach the end of the year, sometimes we do adjust several of the funds at the end of the year, usually the last meeting, and that's just to bring them in line. Right now, if you look at an individual fund, something that has a restricted revenue source, we're making estimates as to how much revenue and what it's beginning balances and appropriating that money to the fund way back in June of the previous year when we did our tax budget. Then we do the updated Certificate of Estimated Resources in January. Typically, prior to that, we've passed in December the permanent appropriations. And then in January, we're estimating how much there's going to be for the full year. And then as the year goes on, we keep changing that certificate with the county, either more money's coming into a fund or less money, as we can then make those adjustments and then make the adjustments to the appropriations so that the amount that's budgeted is closer to the actual amount that was seen in that fund as far as revenue. So that's why we do these adjustments. The, did you want to start with 2018 or 2019?
Let's do 2018.
Okay. So we've got a long list here, and this is really where you're going to want to look at your worksheet. The worksheet was run on, if you look at the top, November 8th, 2018. The reason we were not using October 31st numbers is because this is a three payroll month, so there were five payrolls left in the year. If we waited till after that first payroll and then went in November and ran our numbers, then our projections for those last four payrolls would be much closer. We would only have to project four payrolls instead of five. The calculations, if you open the spreadsheet itself that's been sent out, there's, within the, you'll see there's a payroll tab, which is a tab that imports into this sheet, and you can look at the calculations key by key on payroll. Many of them, if it's a consistent payroll amount, such as my office, where pretty much every payroll is the same, and we haven't had major personnel changes, all we had to do was take the existing amount spent, which is 22 payrolls, divide that by 22, multiply it by 26, that would give us our amount. The ones that are, have more variability, such as police and fire or other departments that we know that there has been personnel changes in through the years, oh, and the first one, that calculation, those are all light blue. The kind of tan calculation box that you would see just means special. And usually what we did is we looked at the total amount in each key of salaries and overtime and everything else expended in October, and then used that number plus the base of October and doubled that as the four remaining payrolls for the year. And you can see those calculations. That's the way we ran them in my office. We also then calculated all of the personnel costs that go in, potential dental, optical, health insurance cost, those were pretty well fixed at this point. We know exactly how much those are going to be for the year for each key. Medicare, workers' comp, pensions, all of those are calculations. So we put together that sheet, and the state put together a sheet. And we sat down with them and spent about three hours a week ago on Tuesday and compared our numbers, and they were very close. Anything that was off tended to be mostly because of workers' comp calculations, where we are calculating the actual percentage, which is the way we calculate it, what percentage of the total amount of salaries that somebody gets goes to workers' comp, they were calculating it on the bill that has actually been sent each month to the department and then multiplying that by the next two months. So those numbers were the ones that were really off a little bit. We also looked at separation pay, and again, if you open this Excel spreadsheet, you'll see a tab and you can dig through it to your heart's content. But what we did is we imported all those numbers for payroll into the sheet that you see here to make it a nice little five pages of relatively small print. And what it shows you is currently that you'll see the key in the first column, 71, 72, 73, and then which department it is under it. So if you just look at the top and then which, what those keys mean. So 71's Personnel Service, 72's Contractual, 73's Material and Supplies, and that first section is for City Council. The first column with totals in it, those are the current appropriations. That's the current budget. And then you'll see year-to-date expense. And remember, this was up till 11/8, so we actually have 22 of the 26 payrolls in there. Incumbrances are purchase orders that are opened at the beginning of the year or that are opened at this time, and then we add those two numbers together for non-personal services. So you'll see the 72 and the 73 hundreds, that's the expense and encumbrance. And then the next column is the payroll that's imported, and then it shows you how much either over or under their total appropriations are projected for the end of the year. So we look at all of those numbers and then went through and said, okay, well, here is where they're really under budget. So we can take that money and shift it to this department where it's over budget. So in that last column, you'll see negative numbers with parentheses around them. Those are things that we are going to reduce the appropriations. And you'll see those on the actual attachment as being the bottom half of the page where it says decrease in appropriations. Anything that's positive there carries over and is an increase in appropriations. So as we move down here, you'll see that under the 200-key Clerk of Council Personnel Expenditure, Personnel Services, $1,500 increase, and that will be the top one over here. Similarly, the ones above it that are negative, under City Council, the 71 and 72 hundred, negative $600, negative $6,000 down on the second half of the sheet where it decreases appropriations. Yep, you'll see, I am. We do need to, I do need to correct one thing in this column. These should not all be in parentheses because it's decreasing, but that's just, is something I have to print off. The amounts are the same. But the one that you'll get on Tuesday night, that'll just say $600 because above it it says decrease. If you decrease a negative, it's, yeah. There is on the spreadsheet that this creates, there's a second column that converts all of those, and that's the one I want to print, not the one that's on here. So we went through line by line, key by key. The state auditor looked through all of the outstanding appropriations or outstanding purchase orders that do not have current appropriations and said, these are things either we're not going to pay for this year or they are things that they, that we are. And we either increased or decreased the appropriations accordingly. Key is, after we do all of this, and you'll see that some of the big numbers, as we get down to page, really the top of page three on this, you know, you'll see there's, you know, an extra $100,000 going to earnings tax refund and $95,000 going to real estate tax, and those are things we actually pay this year. So we're shifting money from one side to those areas to cover them, those are the biggest ones. But if you add all of these up, for the general fund, the total is zero. The net effective change to our total appropriations is zero. The amount of positive expenditure or positive changes equals the amount of negative changes, meaning the areas where we needed to increase, we were able to find, in one key, you have to increase payroll because somebody's over budget. In another area, somebody's under budget, we took from that part of the budget and shifted it over, so it's a net effect of zero. And these spreadsheets were emailed to you. The only difference between the one you were emailed and the one that is here is on page three, Fund 16, Pace Telecommunication Fund, actually gets an increase of $105,000. Remember, earlier this year, we-
What page are you on?
Page three. About three-quarters of the way down, Fund 16, you'll see $105,000 off to the right.
Gotcha.
This year, we did, from the time that the initial appropriations were, were created back in November of last year, we have moved the Cincinnati Bell franchise fees to Pace Telecommunications to pay for Norwood Cable TV. Where that was previously going into the general fund, we moved that. Now, what that means is we have to actually budget it so they can spend that money, right? Because they have the cash.
Is that the exact same dollar amount?
Exact same dollar amount of what?
What we noted earlier in the year?
No, no. Actually, it is based on how much revenue has actually come in, the other 40% that was being held back as of their agreement that we're giving to them, and projections for the last two bits of revenue that are coming in from Time Warner and Cincinnati Bell. So when we look at where they are actually from a cash basis, we need to add $25,000, or $24,084. But when we look at the third and fourth quarter, which should be approximately $64,000 from Charter Communications and $17,000 from Cincinnati Bell, really, we need to make it about $105,000. You can read that email from Kelly Brown in my office, who handles those funds. Or I could forward that to you also, if you'd like.
This is good clarity. I do remember that discussion. I felt like I was recalling, there was a known number then, and I just wasn't certain if this was that same. I thought it was lower earlier in January, so this makes sense.
They were estimates, yeah.
Thank you.
And the other, the other part of that is that 40% of the Time Warner money, which is the Charter Communication, I believe, is held back by the city per the agreement between the city and NCT. And our office would really prefer that a new agreement be made that gets rid of that. And just as the revenue comes in, we just put it into Fund 16, and the city's not holding anything back from that, so.
Was that discouraged with the planning commission?
No, they, the state's comfortable with that.
So why did, if that's your recommendation, and the state's comfortable with that, what would it take to change that?
I believe they're working on it now.
Okay, thank you.
So I had spoken, and this, this might be just a little out of order, out of direction here that we had planned, but I've spoken to the people from NCT, and they were writing a draft of a new agreement, and they were going to send it to the Law Department, and hopefully the Law Department will have that together so that we can have that on the City Council's agenda by the end of the year. And as long as it passes by January 1st, we can just start moving that revenue directly into Fund 16.
I thought I, I guess I missed that. I thought we'd done that, we've, we've done that.
But there's a, there's a written agreement between the city and NCT that we need to redo because the current one says hold 40% back.
Oh, I see, I see.
And so we have to do that until the, quote, "end of the year," which I just said is now.
Okay.
I mean, I thought if we've got to the number of our 15th and haven't had to utilize those funds, we just release that.
Clarifying that.
Yeah. So that is the, the changes to the appropriations from this year. You'll see a lot of the funds, which are the things that have the double numbers at the bottom of each one of the sections, many of those, and especially when we're talking about all the ones that are TIFs, that are special pays, that are school funds, those are things that are property taxes that are collected and then designated for distribution by the county. So we make estimates at the beginning of the year as to how much we think is going to be collected in those property taxes to go to those special funds, but we don't know exactly how much it's going to be. We usually base it on what the previous year was unless there's other information that's available. And when we look at those, we, or when it comes in, we get twice a year, first half and second half. And the second half comes in August or September, and then we know exactly to the penny how much it's going to be, so we adjust those appropriations accordingly. Some of them are pretty big numbers where, you know, if you're going to bring in, you know, if you have a TIF that you're expecting to bring in $2.6 million because that's the amount of the debt that's owed on it, and they don't bring in anything or a very small amount, in those cases, the developer has to make those payments. We didn't know in those cases that there wouldn't be money coming in. Now, as the revenue comes in through that development, as the property is improved and the taxes come in, then the developer will be paid back after the debt and the schools are both paid. But that's why you see a lot of these or adjustments, because they ended up being estimates. And then once we see what they actually are, then we'll base next year's estimates on that. But, you know, this year was big because there was actually kind of a reassessment of a lot of the properties a few years ago, so the amounts varied some. But those are more bookkeeping issues than anything else. It's just adjusting the budget to be the actual amount of revenue and expenditures, so.
A quick point of clarity, at least I think it'll be quick. When these TIFs generate the clause where the developer is making payment, is the city notified?
Yes.
Okay.
We notify the developer. So the process that comes in is if we get a, we get a bond payment that's coming up, we're notified by the bank pretty far ahead of time, plus we know it's coming in. We watch when, you know, we have a master list of all of the debt payments that the city has and when they're coming up. Once we get that first quarter money coming in from the, from the TIFs, first quarter, first half money coming in from the TIFs and it's deposited, we check and see, is there enough in there to make the payment? And if there's not, we contact the bond council.
Okay.
We let the bank know, we contact the bond council, and then the bond council contacts the developer. And the developer has to pay the-
Sorry, keep going.
Yes.
Contact bond council, and then they contact the developer?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the city pays whatever, or the TIF pays.
Yeah.
The city is not on the hook for any of those payments for a TIF. So, and those are taxing incremental financing districts. They're supposedly self-sufficient to pay the bonds for the improvement within there. And if there is a lag in the revenue coming in from the property tax, which may happen the first year or two, if that happens, the developer has to cover that difference.
So question just about Fund 94, the Danamount TIF. So in that fund-
94 or 5?
94.
Oh, 94, okay.
Yep. So in that fund, we had, and the reason I'm asking is just because it's under increasing appropriations for $673,000, but we had $608,000 in appropriations, but the expenses were 1.28 million. So I guess I'm just curious, like, how was that fund able to, you know, even, even though in the revenue, they had the revenue in there, but how was that fund able to spend that without having the appropriations?
Well, we're adjusting the appropriations to the fund.
Right.
Because it's not, a lot of these things that come up from the county settlement sheet are automatic, they're automatically charged to us. So when you look, and, you know, Danamount TIF may not be the best example for that, but when we see things like, you know, advertising delinquent taxes, the county fees, things like that, they just, they just keep that money, and then they tell us, here's how much we kept, and then we have to book it. So we, if we don't have that adequately budgeted because it's more than it was in the previous years, then we have to come and change the appropriations. Now, from that particular TIF, when we look at Danamount TIF, you know, its total revenues, it started with $188,755. Its total revenue was $1,329,365, and its disbursements year-to-date was $1,200, yeah, So all we're doing is, you can see that the revenue that came into the fund was higher than the expenditures, we're just now taking the appropriations and raising them up to the level that its revenue was. Now, as far as did it exceed its-
Here we go.
So now we're going to look at expense account current year only, and this is for 10/31/2018. And if you ever look at these and you want to know from a budgetary-
Which one is that again?
Huh?
Which one is that, which report is that one?
The expense account current year only.
Current year only.
And the importance of knowing the difference between the expense account and the expense account current year only is, the expense account current year only shows only the budgeted amount for that year and the expenses for that year. If you look at an expense report, it will show the budgeted amount for that year plus any outstanding purchase orders at the beginning of the year. And so if you look at that, it will not match what the actual appropriations are because they're mixing some numbers together. Because that's a cash basis. You're asking it to give you an expense report, tell you from a cash standpoint, all, everything that's come in and everything that's gone out for this year. And it doesn't matter if the bill was from last year, and it was billed like your Duke bill from November, and you pay in January, right? From an expense report standpoint, that's cash, that's all of the money that moves in and out. From expense account current year only, it only shows the ones that were incurred this year and owed this year. So that bill for your Duke bill from November and December that you pay in January is actually backed out and put into 2017's report.
Okay.
So when people look at these and they want to know from a budgetary standpoint, where is my budget? Expense account current year only. So, yeah, here, there was in the Danamount TIF, there was extra money that came in and was expended out, so we are negative on that, which is why, we're not negative from cash, we're negative from appropriations. Now, those are bonds that are handled by, you know, bond council. Some of them are things that we actually write checks for. There are other things that the county automatically makes payments on, and, you know, that's, it depends on that individual TIF, I'd have to look. They also get split off, and some money goes to the schools, some money goes to the TIF in the city.
Okay. And then, we talked previously in the Fiscal Recovery Plan about having, moving some street fund people, or, I guess, to parks or what have, sorry, yes, moving employees that are in the street fund to the appropriate places in the general fund. And so does this take into account, I know we had some trouble moving some of them earlier in the year, but does this take into account those people in their correct places?
Yes. So one person from streets, one person from water. These are public works employees who have been doing work for the parks, but they've been paid out of the water fund and the street fund, but since 2011 probably, when we started having some financial problems indefinitely in 2012. And now we want to move them back to where they belong in parks. And as time goes on here, January 1st, there'll be even more people moved from street fund to, but that's in the 2019, to the street key and the general fund. But those have been moved. There were three employees that were moved, and we'll-
Okay. And then why are we not, so another question on this, water fund is not being increased in appropriations at all. So I know we're doing the then and now through council-
We're not, we're not done with our investigation into that. And in order to raise appropriations in the water fund, we would have to change the Certificate of Estimated Resources, and we're not to that point yet. That was one of the things we discussed last week with the state, and we are investigating it and looking into it, but we weren't to the point now where we can change those appropriations. You may see that on a future-
So we might have to have an individual appropriations ordinance just for that?
You may, and like I said, you know, you may see in late December a smaller ordinance that just has a few funds, like the water fund, having their appropriations adjusted based on their revenue and expenditures that we see over the next six weeks, so.
Gotcha.
Jim, where did you say we moved employees from? From the street fund and from water?
Yeah, so they went to parks.
They went to parks.
So 09-20, I believe? Yeah, 09-12.
All right, which we-
Page two.
Page two.
About half the way down, just under Public Lands and Buildings.
Oh, okay.
You'll see parks, and you'll see that the payroll is there.
Okay. And that was one or two people?
That's two.
Two people.
This is something we were going to do earlier in the year, we actually ended up doing it a couple months ago. There was somebody who was moved early on, who was paid under Superintendent of Public Works and got shifted to, I believe, streets. And then there were two other people that we wanted to move back to the general fund, but these were specific individuals, and so we needed to go back. Once we found out the individuals' names from the state as to the two- Once we found out the individuals' names from the state as to the two they wanted moved, we needed to go back and take all of their expenses related to their payroll and move them key by key to the general fund. And the problem we have is our software, in the water fund and in the street fund, doesn't track on an individual basis, the, um...
Sorry, that might be me.
I don't know if it's me. Nope, that's you. Doesn't track on a key... For personnel, because it wasn't set up that way. When we spoke to the developer of the software, we were told that, well, there were two different developers who built the software, and the people who built sort of the general fund area didn't do it the same as the people who built the street fund area. And no, you can't fix that and just keep track of it.
So, one more question about that move.
Yes.
Should I be seeing this exact amount from water? And, like, half of this?
No.
From water and half of street to go in here, or no?
No, you should not. That's more, those types of shifts happen more on the 2019...
Okay.
Where we're moving the exact, as based on what the fiscal emergency plan is.
Okay.
There would be some variability there. We actually decreased the amount early on in the year, and we had the money appropriated in parks, and we had decreased the appropriations for them in water and streets. But we hadn't actually made the full year's calculations to pull them back in, because for a while, we didn't know who the two individuals would be. But now that we've actually done all of that, and we've gotten towards the end of the year, we know that these are the two guys. This was our estimate, and they're actually, they're, they're a little bit over what the estimate was, and a lot of that had to do with specific overtime and things that was being carried through to the new key.
Okay.
And we've got spreadsheets that explain every step of that, if you're interested.
That's enough detail. I would ask, if you're able to, for the printouts you're going to do for Tuesday, can you bring these headers over?
We're not going to do these printouts.
Okay, you're just going to do, okay, great. Well, if we ever need this revised, that would be helpful, too. Thank you.
So, Jim, do you think we could kind of start going through, when we talk about 2018 appropriations, just kind of looking at some of the chain, you know, looking at what's left in some of these funds, or some of these keys and going through? So, I'm just going to, you know, scroll through myself and just ask a few specific questions. And if you all have any questions, too, so while you're looking through as well.
Sure.
So, the first one would just be city council with contractual services. The appropriations were $10,500. Our year-to-date expenses were $390. Jim, do you remember why, excuse me, auditor staff, do you remember why we appropriated that $10,000 for...
My understanding, it was put in there as part of the expense related to the codification.
Okay.
And we've not seen as high of an expense. Now, it doesn't mean that it's not coming next year, but it's the codifying of the ordinances and putting it all online, that, I'm pretty sure that's what that was for. And I brought that up to Anna Mary, who's from the auditor of state, and she said, she had spoken to the IT person from the city and said, yeah, that the expenses for that haven't really been realized yet.
Okay, so, it's likely we'll have to move this into 2019 when we adjust the plan?
Yeah, I mean, you're going to have to figure out on, from a budgetary standpoint, how much that's going to be. It may not actually be $10,000 to do it. I mean, that was a rough estimate. But again, it should be split between two keys, I believe.
Okay.
I have one more question about that. If we're thinking that was for contractual services to do the update of the codified ordinances, this is saying that we've only been invoiced and or encumbered this $390 to pay for that work?
To, not just for that.
So, it could include other things?
For all contractual, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
And to see what exactly was, is spent out of there, if you access eGov and you run an expense audit trail for that key, it'll automatically default to this year, and it'll show you every PO and the vendors and everything else.
Okay.
That's an expense audit trail, and you just pick a key for it, yep.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we are in, going to remove $6,000 from that.
Correct.
Gotcha. Of the $10,000. Going down to mayor's clerk of courts for personnel services, we're projecting, if you subtract the appropriations from how much we're expected to spend, there's, we're over $11,000 in the spreadsheet, but we're taking out $13,000. Can you let us know why we're taking out that extra $2,000?
My projection was for $11,000. The state's on their projection was for a higher amount, and that had to do with the calculation for the workers' comp and the fact that they feel that the bills for the workers' comp for the rest of this year will be significantly lower. If you look on that spreadsheet, if you have it open, and you look on the payroll tab and go to the payroll key for the clerk of courts, you'll see that we base our projections for the workers' comp at being 2.5% of the total amount of the salary, including overtime and any kind of taxable benefits that they get. And we're calculating that as, as that's our starting point. And the argument that they made is because of rebates that we've gotten this year that come in really as almost like negative expenditures, we've gotten some, we got a rebate from last year, which has to show as revenue for this year, but anything this year that we've get a rebate for is actually booked as a negative expenditure. And so, it takes that 2.5% and lowers it. So, the way the state did it was took the actual bill each month that we're paying and just looked at last month's bill and said it'll be the same for November and December, where I was taking the 2.5% calculation, which is our base start. So, and some of these keys, that can, that can equate to $1,000 or $2,000.
Okay. That's fine.
Did you get the, did you get a copy of the spreadsheet from the state?
Let me see if you sent it.
The way they ran their numbers, you mean?
Yeah, I don't know if they had sent it to him also, is the question.
Yeah, I don't have it, so, that would be... Any of these spreadsheets that I do have, I'll send over to you all, but, and that, I mean, that's fine. We'll keep going for now, Jim, but, or, Mr. Stiff, but I just wanted to make sure that that was accounted for, so. Going down to the treasurer's office for personal services. So, we had projected that, the payroll projection was going, essentially, we're $60,000 over in personal services, like, there's extra appropriations there.
Correct. He did not hire an individual.
Okay. And then, so, we're taking $50,000 of it away, so that there's $10,000, like, extra, even over the payroll thing. So, is that being, have we accounted for that as well when it comes to that extra $10,000? Is there a reason why we didn't take out more?
That's the recommendation from the state.
Okay.
So, a lot of these were, let's say there was $10,000, I was taking out, like, $9,500 and leaving a little bit just for some variances at the end of the year, overtime, who knows what else. But I wanted to not take everything down to zero. And when we went through the list where they had their numbers off, and again, the payroll numbers are going to be off between the two sheets, I'm sending you the second sheet here, then they had projections as to how much they wanted taken out. Now, it may not have matched exactly what I had, because again, you're, you're making estimates based on past practice for payroll for the next four payrolls, and how much they're willing to take out versus how much I was willing to take out. And we sort of, in a lot of these cases, just split the difference. Because these are projections. We don't know, you know, we can make estimates on overtime, but we don't know who's going to get sick. We don't know who's going to cash in comp time. A lot of mine, I added in dental optical for the rest of the year. I said, you know, these people get dental optical reimbursements. I look at what they've had for the past 10 months, and my assumption is they're going to have the same for the next two months. Well, the state didn't calculate those in. Similarly, you know, I, we did longevity and all these other payments that are coming up, a police bonus at the end of the year, the training allowance. And so, there will be some differences. But as we sat there and went through this, and we were discussing it, we were saying, here's what I have, here's what you have, we're going to make this difference, this change.
Excellent. Okay. Fund, or, sorry, key...
This should...
The 815, is it transportation expenditures unassigned? Is that what that?
What number?
It's the key 815 in the general fund. That's at the bottom.
I can see it.
Yep.
I just sent Anna Mary her sheet instead of you, so, it's coming.
Excellent.
Now, it's coming.
Okay. So, fund 815, is that transportation expenses unassigned?
That's gas.
Essentially, gas, okay.
That's, that's all that is, vehicle fuel from, from Lykan's. So, a lot of times with those, those types of things, you can imagine, we're, we're making estimates in November and December, just like now. When we get to this 2019 list, we're going to look at that, and we're going to say, we estimate we're going to spend this much money on gasoline next year. Now, we may be able to estimate about how many gallons we use every year, but gas prices, who knows?
Yeah.
You know, and so, there's, there tends to be a lot of fluctuation in those keys. And that's one that we have to, have to adjust every year. Obviously, it's better when it's adjusted down, because gas prices are down. It's similar to the gas and electric. A lot of the 7,400 keys that are on here, the majority of the 7,400 keys, at least from a departmental standpoint, not from a miscellaneous expense standpoint, each one of those, the majority of those are like your Duke energy bill. So, how much do you estimate Duke is going to charge us next year? Well, we've got estimates on it. How much energy do we utilize? Well, we have estimates on that, but is it going to be a cold winter? Is it going to be a hot summer? Who knows? So...
Okay. And police crime control. So, there was, I mean, this is one that I did ask you about before the meeting, but just to, so, essentially, it's noon. We, there's a little bit over a million dollars, I guess, of funds that are, we think are going, well, according to the payroll projections. Can you explain that?
Well, there's, there's, that's not, there's information that's come up since that number.
Since the what point, too?
Yes. We just found out, they just hired a new police officer. So, we had somebody who left, and, you know, we had hired six new ones, which still did not bring them all the way up to their original projections. So, because we didn't have as many as we should have had through part of the year, their, their expenditures dropped significantly. When we brought those six new guys on, we said, well, we better budget those six new guys, not only for the rest of the year, when we did this two months ago, but we also have to give them estimates of how much we think health insurance is going to cost for them. So, we put each one down as a family plan. Now, as it turned out, they didn't all take health insurance, and none of them took the family plan. So, we saved significant amount on the health insurance. And in that gap of time where their numbers were down, we, I guess you would say, saved, but they didn't expend as much money of their appropriations there. One of them left after less than a month or about a month, so, that's one less guy for the rest of the year, the last two months. So, if we had nobody taking the full health insurance and the lag time of hiring the six and the guy leaving, my total estimates would be about 1.2 million. But they just went through the process to hire two new ones, two new officers, and one of them, I know, is getting ready to start. The other one, they're going to hire another one. I don't know if it'll be this year or not. And so, there are some other expenditures that'll go within that, such as, you know, the cost of uniforming the individual, et cetera, and how much his health insurance is going to be this year. So, the states actually, when they look at their numbers, they were thinking that it was $600,000 to $700,000 when you look at their sheet. We'll see. We'll see what it looks like at the end of the year. But we felt it would be safe to move $300,000 out of that, because we needed it in other areas.
So, just to be clear, we're, we're reducing the appropriation. We're not actually saving money.
That is correct.
You shared earlier that the general fund is netting zero. So, it's basically, we put more in a pot than we are drawing on.
From a budgetary standpoint...
Yeah, from a budgetary standpoint.
More was budgeted to this department, and for a variety of reasons, they didn't utilize that full budget amount this year. Although, that does not mean it affects in any way what their budgets next year, because...
Right.
It, you know, this is, this is a personnel issue, and we want them to get back to where the administration wants them, you know? And just hiring people and people leaving sometimes takes time.
Sure.
So...
Yeah, I guess you're getting...
But it shouldn't be thought of as saving money, because this is appropriations. This is budget. This is not cash.
Thanks.
Okay. Excellent. Just kind of going through here, see if any others want to... The EMS fund, so that'd be fund 843, or, sorry, key...
Correct.
843. Debt service principal. So, we originally appropriated $35,000 for that, but we only had an expense of 400, and then we were just, the other $34,600 were reducing appropriations there.
We were financing an ambulance, expecting the first payment to be due the end of this year, and it's due in the end of February instead of now. And so, that's just the way the financing came through, where the beginning of the year or a year ago, we're like, we expected the first payment on something we planned on purchasing in 2018 to be within 2018, and the way the financing worked out, the first payment is the beginning of 2019.
Excellent. Thank you.
as we're changing these appropriations in the 72 and 7300 keys, which is the contractual and the materials and supplies keys for each department, is we did stop processing purchase orders except on an emergency basis. And in meeting with the state, they had gone through and had spoken to the administration about which purchase orders that are outstanding that really need to be processed this year. And some money was left in keys to cover those, as well as for some emergencies. But for the most part, if there's a few thousand dollars left in a key at this point, we're really trying to curb the behavior of somebody coming in and going, oh, wow, I better spend all of this and buy 20 printer cartridges that I maybe need next year. The whole idea is, this budget for, should be for this year, not for stockpiling things at the end of the year, because you can. And so, that's why we've really closed those POs off. Now, that being said, if somebody needs something, if something breaks, if, you know, there's that sort of, you know, immediate need, then those will be processed, and some money was left in there for that. But the state was really pushing this idea that you need to shut it down and not, you know, try to curb that type of behavior if it happens.
Okay. Excellent. Yeah, I think that's all of the... Well, can we talk about the retirees' healthcare in C-9 trust?
Yes.
So, you know, our expenses in both those funds have been under the revised appropriations that we currently have.
Correct.
So, do you expect it, you don't expect any additional, so...
We're still processing any claims that come in at this point. And we're leaving in the C-9 trust appropriations for just this next month, $49,000. And we're leaving in the retirees' healthcare, $55,000. And those, we had looked based on what we felt was still outstanding at this point. Now, that being said, there's a new company that's taken over the management of the C-9 trust. They are going back and doing an analysis and an internal audit of all expenditures over the past few years to make sure that retirees are paid what they owe. I just don't think it's going to happen this year, except, you know, beyond $49,000. Now, there's a very good possibility, early next year, we're going to be hit with a $400 or $500,000 bill. It's probably not... It's probably not going to come because of their audit time that they're doing. It's probably not going to come before January 1st. So we are leaving 49,000 in there, which we can still pay this year, uh, as well as 55 for the retirees' healthcare. And that retirees' healthcare key covers actual medical bills that are billed to the city for their healthcare. They go to the doctor's office, and Medicare doesn't cover it, we pay the rest.
Excellent. Does anybody else have any questions about any of the general fund items that are on there?
I, I have one, so, sorry, I have one, thank you. I think it was two meetings ago, maybe one regular meeting ago, we chose not to continue with our stopgap, our stop loss. Is that reflected on here?
Yes, that's a big reason why we've seen that reduction at $51,000. Because 44 of that would have been the stop loss.
And that would, okay, thank you.
44,000, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that is, well, I'm pretty risk averse, I don't like that, but I can understand why that decision was made and, uh...
I agree with you.
I don't sleep well, but we'll see if we get to January 1st.
We will get to January 1st.
Well, how our state will be at that time.
What will get to January 1st with us?
Thankfully, the risk is very low, so...
I do have one more question. Uh, and the storm water management, I know that, I'm, I'm, this is just a point of clarity. I'm reflecting on the last meeting I listened to, we talked a lot about water.
Yes.
Well, you all talked a lot about water. Is this a part of that conversation, or is this separate?
It is not.
Okay, this is separate.
This is totally separate, this is, um, a different revenue source that was set up by the state, or I believe it was by the state or the county, where there's revenue that comes in that can only be used for, um, storm water management.
Where does that come from?
That, the actual revenue source, it comes through the county, so it probably comes down from the state.
But this one, though, is from a, there's actually a stormwater fee that's added to property taxes.
Thank you. So all of these single digits are property tax related, is that right?
No.
No, okay. But that one is.
That one is. So special assessments, like spas, those are property taxes. Any TIF is considered a property tax. I would say, when you look at, um, if you look at our certificate of estimated resources, there's actually a column that shows the revenue of its property tax.
All right, that's right, you have to do those.
And so you can like, look down that and say, all the property tax ones have their revenue shifted to the left, yeah.
Thank you, I didn't remember that sheet now.
Yeah, it's, unfortunately, the way our system is set up, it's not like they're all clumped together in one nice little area where within fund, you know, like 80 and 100 happen to be these. But, but unfortunately, the system was based on an old system that was ledger paper, and has just been built on and added to over the years. So our fund numbers are just, we try to keep things clumped together, but they weren't really that way when we started.
I just have one more question then, just about that comment.
Yes.
Is there a way to improve that?
Not with our current system, uh, because the problem is if I, let's say I take and I say, you know what, I want to make fund 62, I want to make it fund 50, or I want to make it fund 55, because that's an open fund number. The problem is, when we historically go back and look, it'll be that fund 55 started this year, and we won't be able to track back. And if we start a new fund, like we close a fund out, like fund 20 used to be the Recreation Commission Fund, which has now been moved into the general fund and incorporated as a department instead of its own fund. And the problem there is, whenever you try to run a report and look back historically on what the Recreation Department has done, you hit a point, which is 2017, and you have to now go back to a fund and track it back. And if we want to take that number and make something else fund 20, then all of a sudden, it gets muddied in with all that historic data.
Oh, gosh. That is pretty awful. Thanks for that clarity.
Excellent, so is there any other questions about any of the other funds or?
I think we covered the, the big changes that I was noticing as well.
Lots of information, no more questions.
Are we good with sending this on the count, the full council to, uh, review? And I guess, you know, in order to send it along?
Can we, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with that. The code for the actual spreadsheet, blue was the initial, tan was any special changes?
And it says it on the top of the...
Okay.
On the top of the payroll key, it's got, it, it, like, there's a blue line, or it says normal, or it's like, it'll have the, it'll have the formula in it, yeah.
Okay.
It's just when you're scrolling down quickly, and you're like, okay, well, this is how we did all of these payroll keys.
But the color code's there too.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we call that out.
The tan ones will jump out at you and go, wait, why were these calculated differently? Similarly, what we did with each key, um, when we were calculating the, um, the projected year-end total cost for healthcare, is we looked at, we're only paying, we always pay a month ahead. So we're paying at the end of November, we're paying December's payment. So there's only one more payment to make, and it's the one at the end of November. So if we looked at what the total amount was paid per department for October, and then added that to our current level, that's just one more payment, then that's how we got how much the health insurance is. And so that calculation was done differently, so I believe it's green, you'd have to see. But the healthcare, and it's got an extra column there that shows you what the total amount was for October. And the reason we do that is, we want the payments for 2019 to be in 2019.
Right.
Meaning, January 1st, we're paying the 2019 healthcare payment, instead of December 30th, which is what our normal practice would be, um, on any other month.
Is, is it feasible, and maybe this is not, so just asking, the commentary that we might have taken note on, can we have those comments added? Is your team able to do that?
You mean comments to the pages?
To the spreadsheet, like the actual comment box feature.
There are on the spreadsheet, when you look at it, there are several things that are comment boxes. There are other areas that are not on this printout, just because it's big, where things are typed to the right.
So like, for instance, the reason why we're going down in the contractual for city council, that would be there somewhere?
Uh, that one may, that one may not be there, but a lot of the other ones, which are specifically shifted, there are some that have...
They're just further over.
There are some that are comment boxes, and then there are some that are off to the right, yeah.
All right.
And the reason I do it that way, off to the right, is because I have a really widescreen. And comment boxes, you have to either hover over or keep them open, and sometimes they'll cover things. So it's actually easier to make notes to the right.
Okay. I think that's helpful in terms of sending it along.
I try, you know, I try to do that if I see something that jumps out. But on the other hand, there might be some things that are, you know, the state's saying, well, you can just cut this by 300. And there may not be that specific justification. A lot of these keys, again, the reason that we're able to drop them is because we're not running purchase orders for those keys now, so, unless it's urgent.
Thank you.
But now we have another beast.
Yes, indeed.
I would like to say, one of the things, we talked a little bit, or touched a little bit on...
Do you want to make, this is for the, we're, this is for 2019 appropriations, this is for next year's.
I did want to mention about the, the water for this year. You know, we, we talked about not changing the appropriations on the water bill, which is up $420,000 from where it was, uh, at the end of September last year to September this year. Significant increase, which has made us go negative. And we are in the process of going through and trying to analyze, um, information on usage and billing, and what those cycles are. And we've presented that already to the state, but we did bring, uh, I gave to the chairman of the committee all of the water bills from this year, from our major, um, our major inputs to the city. There are some small bills we get that are like $300 a month to run, let's say, you know, the McCullough Park. Or there are some small bills that are for fire services, but I mean, they're very small amounts, less than $100 usually on a month. But the one big bill comes in from nine different meters, and we've got that here, uh, for a whole year, including the usage per meter, per month, and the total usage for that year, so that'll be fun to dig into.
Did you say it's, did you say it's up 400,000, or do you...
Yeah, it's...
From last September?
It's January through September...
Of '18.
Of '18 compared to January through September of '17. So, and then we're looking here, how much did it increase or decrease from the prior year? So it's actually $476,667 higher January through September of 2018 than it was January through September of '17. And January through September of '17 was $138,705 higher than the same timeframe in '16.
Yeah, that's like, I mean, you've got the percentage here too, it's around 6.2 to 20%, that's a, that's a lot.
Yes, and so that's why we're trying to, uh, trying to figure that out. And the state's working on it, you can have that copy if you'd like.
And I mean, I'm happy to make a copy, scan this in if anybody else wants to see the...
Scan it?
Yeah.
It is kind of nice because it does show on the bill, going back, so this is October 2017 through October 2016, a monthly usage for those. But when you look, these are the actual meters, and it's on two pages. And then it'll show you the previous reading, current reading, and current usage calculated. And so we want to go through and make a spreadsheet for each meter and show what its usage was, and then have the total usage and use our per meter, and then, uh, put the total amount of the bill that's on there. For each bill, we've gotten since, I think that this goes back December 6th, so this is November's bill from last year.
So your staff is working on that?
Uh, I'll probably work on that, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. I kind of like to do those things.
I could sense your excitement when you were into the analysis of the last meeting that came across through the screen.
Yeah, we still haven't quite narrowed it down, some of it is billing cycle, some of it is increased uses, uh, usage. We're also putting together, uh, on that same subject, a, another, uh, analysis where, that's what I'm working on now, um, where we're going back for each year and looking at the beginning balance and the year-to-date revenue and the year-to-date expense at the end of each year, all the way from 2000 to 2018, well, to the end of 2017. And then looking at the changes we're seeing in the beginning balances, as well as increases in revenue and increases in expenses. And then I started tracking, um, on another column, the rate increases that happened each year to the citizens' rate, as well as the year it happened. But we only had a few years' worth of data, and the rest of it was just turned over to me, uh, past day. So I intend to fill all those in and try to make it a more, uh, steady analysis for both sewer and water, so.
And then...
All on one page.
Is the hope that, as we get more understanding of which changes create the impact we're seeing, we could then consider with the administration some practice changes?
Correct, and, you know, that's, the most important thing first is to collect the data and try to, um, come up with an analysis of where, where the problem was. What was the big shift? What year did we see, and what month did we see a sudden change, uh, in usage and in expenses? And are there any big things that jump out? And that's what we're doing now.
Okay.
Although, any kind of recommendations to changes that's not our department, meaning it's not the auditor's office in charge of that, but we are trying to compile the data to give to the individuals who make those decisions.
How many departments are involved?
In that, just one, it's the water department.
Okay, your comment made it sound like it was multiple to me anyway.
No.
I was like, who else are we missing?
No, I just, I don't want to make it seem like I'm going to have an answer and say, fix it this way.
Oh, I see what you mean.
I want to put together information that the people who are in charge can use as a tool to make those decisions.
Yeah.
Because it's not going to be a simple, you know, here's the one thing to do.
Right.
And the state's involved in that too, so we're working with them on this.
Well, I've, I've just been using and learning some, um, improvement tools as part of my regular workday, looking at different drivers around, not just process change, but how to sustain change. So I'm glad you're taking the lead on getting the data, because that is the huge first step. I'm, I'm willing and wanting to look at that too, to see...
There's some...
What we can track.
Yeah.
For improvement's sake.
And there's some exciting changes that, um, from a software standpoint, if we upgraded the software in the, in the water department, the billing of online billing, online payment, um, electronic billing, email billing, um, a lot of different options that I think can move us into the 21st century. I mean, we're using software that's, that's very old. And, uh, that's something we'll be looking at into the future. But also into, you know, the problem is, with a three-month billing cycle, you know, we're being billed by Cincinnati every month for what we use in water. And we're billing our citizens every three months, so there tends to be a lag. And there's also, uh, a variability in which, which month what the, the average revenue is, depending on where you are in that three-month cycle. And, you know, to be able to move to a more regular billing, maybe an answer, the ability to actually track things more closely, we discussed with Mr. Bonza, which I'm not sure how that's going to work, but I, I think there's a lot of things that we should be looking into with it, and we'll, we'll pull the numbers and go from there.
So a lot of variables.
Basically, the idea is not to spend as much as you appropriate in those savings funds. So if, if you're up, you're saying you're appropriating other areas with that, it seems like that'd be our goal, not to spend what's appropriated.
Right, because you want to stay under budget whenever possible, because, you know, we're negative. And, you know, we've been negative for several years. And I said, uh, two and a half, three years ago, when we first started really having this problem, and I was giving warnings, uh, as to the uncertainty of the financial, financial future of the city.
I was here.
And making recommendations to, you know, do hard things, to lay people off and close departments so that we wouldn't end up negative. We're negative. But at that time, I said, by the end of 2018, we should be looking good and should be positive. And I think that we're moving in that direction. And so I think when we sit down and actually do, when the state does, their next fiscal emergency, uh, plan?
Financial planning.
Yeah, I think that, um, we're moving in the right direction, but we're also correcting things that needed to be corrected. As far as personnel being paid out of other departments to free up money in the general fund. I mean, that, you, you need to get those people paid where they are doing the work, you know? Having, uh, somebody fixing the parks being paid out of a street fund doesn't make sense. That guy working in the park should be paid out of the parks in the general fund. And a big argument, and as we're going to move into this, this is your fiscal emergency plan, so 2019. Two spreadsheets, one is the actual permanent appropriations. This is the, um, the printout that is going to be the Exhibit A. And if you look at the third column from the right that says appropriations 2019 total on the big spreadsheet, that is, that should match each key over to the right.
This is the worksheet?
That's the worksheet, yes. This is the Exhibit A. This is a printout of this. This is a tab on this spreadsheet, but this is the printable, readable one.
Okay, so you're saying this not the sheet, that?
Yeah. And the, uh... So what we have here, and as we remember back what the fiscal emergency plan looks like, it has some very specific things that we have to follow. And in starting with it on page, I always love when they have this intent, this, this page left intentionally blank, and then they print that out, you know, as a page, just so that there's paper. I know it's because of the duplex, but whatever. So when we look at that first part of the plan, and, yeah, just, the first part of the plan is the revenue. And we can see what 2018's forecasted revenue and expenditures are, and then we have what 2019's forecasted revenue at the top of the page for the general fund, and then just about a quarter of the page down, starting on expenditures. And you look at that 2019 column, those numbers on these pages should match exactly the numbers that are in the first major column that says Plan 2019 on your... numbers that are in the first major column that says Plan 2019 on your worksheet. And so we took all of these numbers and converted them into keys that we use in our accounting system. And you can walk down, most of it matches, some things are a little bit off just because the key order may be different. But when you're looking at that 2019 forecasted column, if you have your copy of the fiscal emergency plan, if you don't have one, it's on norwoodauditor.com, you can download it, print it out. It basically, it matches the plan, that's the whole idea, with one exception, which is the earnings tax incentive refund, which on this spreadsheet, we get down to page three, right in the middle of the page, you'll see earnings tax refund, $1.9 million, and then we're taking $1.6 million off it, so there's $351,600 left as appropriations. That is Fund 89, the bane of my existence. Because whenever you look at the fiscal emergency plan, they take all of the taxes that are collected by the city, all the earnings taxes, they put it in there as money that can be spent, as revenue. And then they say, all the money that goes to Fund 89, which is the reinvestment, the reimbursement fund, it's for certain companies that if they meet payroll expenditures and tax goals, they get a rebate. So it's not really a refund, but they get this rebate, and within the structure of those agreements, they say it has to be kept in a separate fund. The state says, no, you shouldn't be keeping it in a separate fund, it should be mixed in. So on our plan, it's mixing in, but on your appropriations, you need to divide it out.
So I'm looking through five earnings tax refunds.
Correct.
You're saying that 350, sorry, I forgot this wasn't here. So the earnings tax refunds, this 351?
Yes.
Goes into Fund 89?
No.
No.
The $1.6 million.
Thank you, that goes in.
So we're appropriating $351,000 for earnings tax refunds. Now, our refunds typically range between, you know, and this is when you get your refund, or when somebody files their corporate tax and the corporation gets its refund, how much tax refunds do we write as a city? And typically, it can be between $250,000 and $350,000. This past year, it was significantly higher because of a large corporate refund. So there's some variability. We use this as a starting point. We may get to this point next year and go, wow, you know, we didn't use anywhere near that, and that might be one of the keys we're reducing. But what we're doing is we're saying, they're going to put about $1.6 million into Fund 89, and we're going to put about $350,000 of refunds for fun, or for the general fund, for earnings tax.
So you said there was a big, a corporate refund?
Yes.
Is that, you know, we had, that's not the med pay stuff, we're done with the med pay stuff, right?
Correct.
Okay.
No, so from my understanding, and, you know, I'm not the, not the tax commissioner, so, you know, that might be a better question for the treasurer, but from our understanding and I'm talking to the state auditor and everything, there was a company that paid estimated corporate taxes, not payroll taxes, but corporate taxes quarterly, and then they did their taxes at the end of the year. They were bought by another company, there were some other things going on, but when they did their taxes at the end of the year, they had a loss. And so all of their taxes on their profit, on their corporate taxes, they were able to get as a refund.
Okay.
And that was a significant amount, so.
We're going to go through it?
So what we have in that first column is the plan. And everything in that first column matches the plan, down to the specific funds that are in the plan, which really you could cut off at State Highway Fund 3 at bottom of page three. And that's where you'll see another column in the center turns gray. We'll talk about everything below that after going through the plan. So each one of this first column matches the plan. And then we have the plan items. So once you go through the plan, the fiscal emergency plan, which also doesn't have page numbers...
I probably fixed that.
I don't know. So they, when you get down to the bottom, and it's saying the deficit for the fund at the end of the year, and here's your totals, the next page after the totals is the plan items. And these are the things that we do in each year to make a difference. And, you know, so for example, for 2018, we moved street employees from the street fund to the general fund under parks. We moved a street fund employee from the water fund. We moved him into, it should have said parks employee to the water fund, from the water fund. We moved the lighting from the street fund and the lighting from State Highway Fund, the actual Duke bills for our street lighting, to the general fund, under the street key in the general fund, because it's not state highway improvement, it's not street maintenance and repair, it's public safety. And so we were told, actually from a legal standpoint, we can't pay those things out of the streets and the state highways, so we made those corrections in 2018. So the corrections we have to make in 2019 now are shown in this next column, Plan Items 2019, the next column over that has all of the numbers on it. And that's where you see adjustments being made throughout that entire thing. When you look at the fiscal emergency plan, and they talk about things, we have to put these in. Doesn't mean they won't be changed when they come up with a new plan, but we have to have our appropriations match the fiscal emergency plan. So all of these plan items are listed here in this column, except for the first plan item, which is the employees paying for part of their health insurance. That has its own column next to it.
Why?
Because it was easier to break it out, because otherwise it would get mixed in with payroll movement.
Okay.
And since it's a separate plan item...
I see.
We wanted it, that whole total of that column to be $411,100, because that's the total on the plan item, where the other ones might be, you know, if it's movement of personnel, it's all of the personnel cost, including health insurance, but then you're taking money off for the, paying for the part of health insurance.
Okay, thanks.
And just, and when you look at this spreadsheet and you're going through, the calculations for that make more sense in doing it that way.
I see what you mean.
Yep. And then when we get to the bottom and we say, okay, so on our fiscal emergency plan item sheet, the total amount of all the changes for the general fund, the gross amount, gross changes, or the net change, I'm sorry, is $539,000.
And it's called net change on there?
It doesn't, it just says, what it's called on here is Changes From Recovery Plan Items.
Okay.
Right there.
That's good.
But when you take all the positives and the negatives and you add them together...
Yeah, I see it here, and it looks like the difference on the, on the 2019 worksheet, the 539 looks like...
Yes.
The net changes for the general fund.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that matches the number that's called Changes in Fund, or, it's Changes From Recovery Plan Items for the 2019 fiscal emergency plan.
Gotcha. That's helpful.
So we take all the plan as it's written above the line, we make the changes that are made below the line in those two columns, and we end up with our appropriations.
So the 539 is what we want to change for 19? Or that's what we thought in 18?
No, that's for 19.
That is exactly for 19.
Right, and the reason I have that total off to the side there is just to show that the balance matches what's in the plan.
Okay.
So when we look at the plan, and you're looking at that first part of the plan, and you'll see that the total expenditures for the general fund's $22,788,380, right? Then we make our changes, then we end up with the $21,165,218, you know, and that difference being the $539,000. Now, there's some variability, because remember, between the plan and the appropriations, you've got that $1.6 million coming out of the earnings tax refund, because technically it's not an earnings tax refund. It's money that goes to Fund 89. So the other thing that we've got towards the bottom here is the appropriations for individual funds.
Yeah.
And we went through, and you'll see I made one line here that's going down the middle. If you look at the bottom of page three, that gray line is, what were the appropriations in 2018? This is prior to the adjustments that we just made, but this, actually, I think they, actually, I think I fixed it. So these are the appropriations for 2018, and I looked at what is our tax budget approved? You look at that next column, second from the left, it says approved tax budget. And that is what we actually sent to the county and comes back to us as our certificate. Now, the actual Certificate of Estimated Resources, which is what all of these funds' budget will be approved on, comes out by the end of January. And so what we do, and that Certificate of Estimated Resources shows the maximum that you can appropriate or budget for each fund. We exceed that in the general fund because we're in fiscal emergency, but we can only really exceed that amount for funds that are in fiscal emergency, which is Fund 2, 3, 81, and 1. So I took the numbers from the tax budget and put them there and compared them to what the appropriations were last year and put most appropriations in here. There are a few of them that are a little off, and I'd like to leave them in until I talk to the state, meaning, a good example is Norwood Energy Spa. We didn't know on that special assessment...
Page four?
I'm sorry, yes, page four, if you look at Item 54, which is Fund 54, the special assessment for Norwood Energy, that only came through on the second, the second property tax county settlement sheet from the county in August. As you remember, we passed the tax budget in June, so it was prepared in May. So we didn't know if any money was coming into that, because we hadn't gotten our taxes back on it. So on the tax budget that was passed last year, we said $0 we expect to come into it. But $54,000 came in this year, but it came in after we passed that. So I'd like to say we should appropriate $54,000 for it, because that's how much we expect to come in. And definitely, when we do our Certificate of Estimated Resources in January and look to adjust these fund balances based on what the actual fund balance is at the end of the year, plus the revenues that we expect, based on the total revenue of the year last year, we'll be adjusting a lot of these keys. Whereas, I would like to just say now, let's just leave it at what we think we're going to really have, and not base it on what we thought we might be having at the end of the year back in May. So I need to talk to the state and see if we can do that. And so there's a couple, and if you look on the bottom of this, page four, you'll see there's some of these with big negative numbers off to the right, $172,000, $95,000, $10,000 down below that. Those are ones where they, the amount of appropriations exceed the amount that was estimated on the, on the tax budget.
Can we walk through the Norwood Energy Spa to make sure I'm getting this? So it looks like we appropriated in 18, $188,000.
For the Norwood Energy Spa?
This is the same, I'm looking at 18.
Correct, yes.
And it looks like...
But we're actually adjusting it down.
Right, right, we just adjusted it down to 80, by 86.
Right. So it's about $101,542 is its total revenue?
Right.
Yes.
And so, help me understand again, based on the appropriation change we're making, you're saying we should be budgeting for what did come in year-to-date?
I'm saying that we need to estimate, because that, so that spa started in the middle of a year.
Right.
So we only saw half of the potential revenue.
I see what you mean.
Now, it may have been, and the revenues aren't always 50/50, they're 40/60 as they come in. So they're not, or they're 45/55. So it's not like you could just say, whatever the number you got at the end of last year, double it. So when we're projecting how much is going to come in from that, probably about $172,000 would be my estimate now, if I was creating a new Certificate of Estimated Resources for next year. However, they're basing what your certificate is now for 2019 is what your tax budget was. But the tax budget came out before any revenue was realized for that fund.
Okay.
So, yes, this year it was 100, after the adjustment, it was $101,000. I'm thinking next year, the estimate's going to be about $172,000. That'll be adjusted in January when we do the Certificate of Estimated Resources. But the next column says zero. There's nothing there, because on the tax budget, we didn't know how much was coming in, or if any would, or when we would see it. So we had that at zero.
That was from June?
Yes.
Okay.
And really was calculated in May, so.
Right.
So now we're like, okay, well, should we be, are we allowed to appropriate that $172,000? Or are they going to say, you have to make it zero, and then make a new certificate in January, and then in February, you can adjust it with a new ordinance?
What...
And then you can make it 172. I'm not sure of the timing of that. So I'm going to have a discussion with them tomorrow. I would like to leave that one at 172, Stormwater Management at $95,000, and Central Park School Fund at $10,000.
What is this column here? It's the same as this one. I just don't know what it is.
This one, let's see, where are we? It's, I believe it's just an extra column, because it's not the same. So this was plan items here, and there are no plan items for this, except in these.
Okay, so it is still plan items, but you just don't have any.
Correct. So you'll see there are specific keys that will reflect plan items, plan items like water fund, so...
I gotcha, I just didn't know it didn't have a header.
But for the other funds, right.
Okay, so then this next...
So they're really not plan items for the funds, except for, they only are for the funds that are in fiscal emergency...
Right, right.
Or for those dealing with personnel that were going to be affected by changes on the fiscal emergency plan.
All right, that's helpful.
I really don't think about it, these, as I'm printing out, as I'm looking at them on the computer.
I know, that's why I keep asking, what is this? And what is this?
I sat there for like 10 minutes before I ran up here going, oh, I got to print this out.
So when do you think you'll hear from the auditor regarding that?
What I would do is I'm going to go ahead and supply this to council, and I expect to hear from them tomorrow. And if we have to change those three funds, we'll either do it tomorrow, or we would just do it on council floor and say, just line those out on the official one. Or I would just, what I would probably do if they say no, is I would just produce copies of new ones to give out to council, but those would be the only areas that change.
And that was the Norwood Energy Spa, this Norwood Energy Spa, the Stormwater Management Fund, and the Central Park Tiff?
Yeah, so it's 54, Funds 54, Funds 62, and Fund 75.
75?
Yeah. If you look at the ones that are negative.
Oh, the school, the Central Park, okay. Got it.
I think those are the only negative ones, yep.
Okay, so I had some questions about a couple of funds.
Yes.
So are Fun, so from my understanding, Fun 4, which is the CWNP, that's like the nature preserve.
Yes.
Fun 22, Linder Park Flower Fund.
Yes.
And then the Water, Fun 29, Water Works kind of trust fund. So in those funds, I guess I have, those are funds that are set aside as almost like, you know, trust funds to help deal with, you know, maintenance or capital expenditures and for their specific designees. And I guess the Flower Fund is really to deal with some landscaping at the Linder Park. So for me, well, I would personally like us council to consider, Finance Committee, to consider not appropriating the full amount of the fund, because in previous years, we always just appropriate, whatever the total balance of the fund is, we appropriate that amount. I think, though, that before these funds are used, I think that whoever is wanting to use them, I guess, you know, the city administration, I think they should have to come to us, council, and talk about why they want to use these funds. The reason why the concern is here is that... The reason why the concern is here is that for the Water... I think it was the Water Works Fund.
Twenty-nine?
Yep. We had one of...
Twenty-nine?
Yep, so for... We had at one of the baseball fields at Water Works Park, there was a issue with a power surge or with the electric box. Essentially, a lighting electric box had to get replaced. I mean, it's like a four thousand dollar or some multi-thousand dollar expense. And something that to me, it considers it's a maintenance... It's a maintenance expense. It's not a capital. We're not improving anything. We're just fixing whatever the... We're fixing the box. And it was an old box, but still, the kids aren't realizing that benefit other than just having the lights turned back on. So, for me, I would like to see us... And so, that's what it came from. So, the city administration didn't know where to bring it from, so they just decided they were to get it from one of those funds. But to me, that's something that I wish that they would have brought to us at the time because I feel like it's something that we could have... When we do all these appropriations, adjustments, stuff, we could have adjusted... We could have figured out a way to make it happen because you have to have the lights, you know, working. So, that being said, I would like to... You know, I personally would propose for us, for Fund Four and Fund Twenty-nine, us to just appropriate zero dollars in that fund for next year. And then for Fund Twenty-two, it looked like... I need to pull the auditor report back up, but that one, we just had a three hundred dollar... Let's see here.
Where are you referencing?
Fund... Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the cash position report, so it's not... Fund Twenty-two, I think we should just consider a reduced amount, potentially five hundred dollars in that fund.
Do we... Do you know who... Who you would expect to hear from when you say the administration coming to let us know what their plan is and we adjusting appropriations versus just allocating the whole amount?
Well, it would essentially just be Joe Gears. So, if Joe Gears does want to spend something out of that fund and not take some of the expenses from the general fund, I think that they should come... Joe Gears, the mayor, whoever wants to do it, they should come talk to council or come talk to finance committee about doing it. And we can adjust the appropriations for those funds at that time if we feel like it's a good use. But I feel like these trust funds, I mean, one of them, you know, was complete donation from Cara Linder. Actually, a couple of the were Linder donations essentially that were set aside. And I think that we should do everything we can to protect that and ensure that we're only using it for things that are truly going to add value directly to the kids. And if there's maintenance expenses that are going to... You know, we have something break and we need to get that fixed, then to me, that should be something that we find in our general fund. I mean, that's not something that should be expected to be paid out of that fund.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense. I just wondered why that was done. Is it because there was no money in the general fund at the time? Or is that just where they felt they should?
Well, they didn't have the appropriations to do it at the time, and they were just solid as like they need to get it, you know, take care of the kids. They need to make sure...
I understand that.
Yeah, yeah. I just think that in the future... So, as soon as I saw that, you know, I asked questions about it, and it was essentially like, what else did you want us to do? Because we... There was appropriations there and there wasn't appropriations in the general fund for the... To repair that. So, something we'll talk about when we readjust the financial recovery plan in the spring, which I wish we would have been able to do it earlier, but that's... Our financial supervisors kind of dictate that. We'll look at making... Ensure we have proper funds in the park... The recreational or park funds that would have funded that. So, we'll make sure that that's... When we adjust it, we're going to make sure that we add stuff in there for that to account for things like that. But I think, though, for now, I truly believe that we need to keep these non-general fund funds that have kind of trust money set up for parks and for other things. I think we need to make sure that those are not spent, you know, without our approval. And by making those, you know, very low appropriations or zero appropriations, then we can do just that.
So, I have a couple of thoughts around that. I think it sounded preserve the funds. I guess I would wonder, do we have documentation anywhere on what the purpose of them is?
We do have files on several funds. I'm not sure if we have specifically these.
And we said for twenty...
There are funds where... Every fund has a folder in my office, and if we had availability of the actual founding documents, the actual founding ordinance of the fund or letters related to it, they would be in that folder. That way, any correspondence that comes in relating to that fund, copies go in those folders. However, some funds had been around so long that documentation was before my time. So, we would have to look.
Could you?
We might have something there.
I think Mr. Bronsel is wanting to move forward with the appropriations at the next regular meeting?
We should def... In order to have three readings.
So, okay, great. So, I'm just a point in time. So, I do want to ask Mr. Stith, can your office look and provide to us any documentation you have on the purpose of Fund Four, Twenty-two, and Twenty-nine?
Yeah, I can look right after the meeting and let you know in five minutes.
That would be wonderful. I think with that, I would be really curious to discern, was that intent around improvement? Or was it around maintenance? I think the distinction Mr. Bronsel was making was if there are areas of the city, like our park areas that need maintenance, you're saying that should be part of our plan with the general fund? Is that right?
That's where I, as a council person, would prefer to see it.
I'm just trying to make sure I'm tracking the distinction of the ideas. I think the more clear we can be about what funds are for, the better for everybody. Because where I wonder what our role could be when we report out to council and as we work with the rest of the administration is how do we, much like we're asking of the departments to submit a budget, how do we begin to identify a steward? Or even as a committee, how do we begin to put together a plan for what's in the funds? Do we have a point of view that we want to develop and ask the administration to support? Or do we want to ask the administration, would you please submit to us what you'd like to do with these funds upfront so that we don't end up with a bunch of special meetings? I'm in agreement that if there's no plan, we don't need to just give away a blank slate. Not giveaway, let me use more discreet language. We don't need to allocate money if there's not a reason, known reason for using it. I think that gets us into having to make adjustments like we just did. But on the flip of that, I don't hear us identifying there is somebody who's been responsible for developing a budget for these funds. So, I think we should be thoughtful about that if we're going to make this recommendation. What could that process look like? And would that require us to meet at a standing time so the administration would know, well, we have thirty days to plan for the next request or any adjustments? Or what would we want that to look like? I think while we're working the fiscal plan, it could be meaningful to just ask, hey, administration, could you use that, I think it's September thirty, September fifteen, cutoff date as well for these funds too? Just a thought at first glance hearing, we might have opportunity to be more judicious.
I think that is great feedback and a great point. I will reach out to the city administration to ask them if they have any plan for those three funds, items they want to ensure they like... Items that they have planned for already. So, I will talk to them about that. The Linder Park Flower Fund is one that they... There is some traditional like landscaping type expenses there. But it's not twenty-six... The beginning balance last year, it was twenty-six thousand dollars. The unexpendited balance right now is twenty-three thousand. There's forty-six hundred in encumbrances. So, you know, question to me is what... Yeah, the purpose, what is the purpose of the fund for? But also, I would just want to ensure that if they do have some spending, that we only allocate to that. So, I agree with that suggestion.
I definitely wouldn't take these to zero, though. We would have to look at the... Let's look at the expenditures from Four.
From Fund Four?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cypress Way Nature Preserve. And these aren't audit trails, so it doesn't show each thing. But it does show the key that things are expended from. And so...
It's easy, yeah.
Fund Four gets a water bill because it's got...
Safe and safe.
Yeah, so up year-to-date, they've spent about twenty-seven hundred dollars on water because it's got bathrooms and things there. And that is a property that's owned by Norwood that's outside of Norwood.
It's in Cincinnati, to be clear. It does have a home. It's not just out there.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah, outside of Norwood.
But I'm saying it's...
It's out there.
The other part of that is it... The Duke bills are paid out of there. And they're probably this year going to have seven thousand dollars worth of Duke bills and...
For the lighting at that park?
Correct. And three thousand dollars and probably the building there too, yes. So, I mean, there's things that's used for. I'd say for ten thousand dollars worth of expenditures, I would hesitate at taking it to zero. If you want to leave enough in to cover those fixed expenses, the water and the gas and electric, and take it to ten thousand, that would be the minimum I would take it down because I'm going to get a bill in February to pay.
I hear it. Well, I know, I understand.
You don't want to come talk to us again?
I understand what you're saying there, and that makes sense. Potentially, you know, for the... We may not want to take down to zero for that. But I do think... So, the current balance in that fund is...
Fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen thousand. Yep, thank you, fourteen thousand, one fifty-eight. So, after next year, in 2020, there's not going to be enough... There's not going to be enough funds in that fund to keep paying that water bill and keep paying the electric bill. So, it's coming to the general fund no matter what at some point. I mean, or they close down the park, you know.
That's the only funding source for the park there?
For that fund, I'm looking at its revenue source.
There was zero revenue for Fund Four.
Yep. No money's coming this year for it.
So...
So, just to be clear, how did the twenty-three get there or the twenty-four?
There was an initial like trust set... There was initial amount set up, but there's no...
Way back whenever.
Yeah, there's no... There was no revenue. At least no revenue came in this year.
So, you're saying that that water and that... You would say that that water bill and that electric bill should go to the general fund under parks?
Starting at the very... As soon as we can adjust the financial recovery plan at the beginning of next year, I'd say that that we should, in my opinion, that should be all general fund stuff. Let's save that twenty...
So, I would definitely put at least three thousand into that key. So, you know, if we pay bills in the beginning of the year, as long as it's within the same financial year and you... We get three months into the year and I've paid three months' worth of electric and water bills for it, and you guys say, you know what, we want to move it to this other key, we can back it out. We just can't go past the year to do that.
So, that's... It's interesting. So, and if we look at the disbursements in all three of these funds, so ten thousand, seven eleven, plus thirty-three, twenty... Ten thousand, seven eleven, plus thirty-three, twenty...
Thirty-eight, fifty-eight.
Plus thirty-eight, twenty... Thank you. So, it's seventeen thousand, eight eighty-nine. I mean, can we back out all of these expenses and put them into the general fund for this year? If we can get April and Anna Mary, the financial supervisors, to...
You'd have to... You'd have to have a key that it would go into.
Well, I mean...
You'd have to have a place to put it. And the question is then that's not part of the plan.
Right, but neither are... Was the real estate taxes that are higher than they are now. And neither is the... We're putting an extra hundred thousand dollars into the fire department personnel key that because it wasn't part of the plan and we had two extras. So, I guess to me...
That's because their expenditures for their overtime was significantly higher this year than it has been the past few years.
Sure, so I... Well, but though we have less employees, we have less employees.
But these are...
It would have been war... If we would have hired employees, because that's what I keep hearing, is that if we hire employees, well, we reduce the overtime. But if we hire the three employees that people are saying that we have to hire, then our person... We'd be even more out of whack, like the amount of...
Firemen roughly with health insurance, you know, if you just look at the raw number, it's about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars per new fireman. That's just average. You take the number of people divided by the expense under the personnel key, right? So, it's about that. Police are a little bit less. So, when you're talking about, well, you have a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in overtime, hires three new guys, well, you're going to be doing a hundred and thirty-five thousand times three to save a hundred and twenty-eight.
So, the reason why I'm bringing all of this up is that I think it should be this... It's my... I think it should be this committee's priority and this council's priority to preserve as much funding as possible that could be used for the parks. And where we have general fund appropriations now on 2018 that could be moved over there. Like, we're... They're being way extra conservative in quite a few of these different keys. I think that we should do everything we can to preserve that. If we do it before the end of the year, we could preserve that eighteen thousand that has already been spent this year in those keys.
And so, when we're looking at the 2018 changes to appropriations, you can go ahead and pass this one and do all three readings next Tuesday. Make all of these adjustments, and you still have two other meetings this year to make additional adjustments.
Yeah, I'm not sure that... Well, that's actually an interesting question. So, do you feel like it's in the best interest of the city for us to get these 2018 appropriations passed?
Yes.
Okay.
From the standpoint that there's one thing that's in there that is a settlement that needs to be paid, that I can't pay unless that's passed.
Mr. Bronsel, do you see a concern with having three readings for the appropriations?
I don't see a concern. It just... I had not...
But you can also...
Thought about it.
Adjust what you want to adjust if they approve it at another meeting.
That's a good point. So, we can... We can move forward with this for the 2018 appropriation because it is important to get that moved forward and still adjust it again because we'll have to do it for the Water Fund potentially.
Yes.
But the priority, Mr. Stith, you're saying is we want to be able to accomplish that settlement.
That's one of the things. There's a few other... I think that's the only one that's hanging out there that's actually a bill that would wait on the passage of this.
So, then I guess that's helpful insight.
Yes.
That I think we should be able to recall when expressing why we might put this forward as an emergency. And this would be an ordinance, not a resolution for the appropriation changes. But then we... But we do have time to do three readings for the 2019 appropriations.
Yeah, three different meetings.
Yeah. I'm in agreement, I mean, from what I know and I've heard, to do this preservation of the funds too. I think being able to get that initial documentation, if it exists, is a real important part. I guess for me, like finalizing my conclusions on why we would move it. But I'm understanding these are... This is legacy funding that we're not putting anything into as the city. It just gets lower and lower. And so, I think what's being discussed is, is it more powerful to put this funding in the general fund where we're taking care of parks already?
Or put the expenditures into the general fund?
Thank you, the expenditures. That's a better word.
So, that being said, for the copy that I'm going to go down and change and print out for the agenda, you want CWNP to be how much?
We can make it the three thousand that you... This is for the 2019 appropriations.
This is correct.
Okay, perfect, yep. So, I'd say, yeah, let's make it three thousand.
Because that's what we think would be the minimum for water and lights?
Well, for the first couple of months, for the first quarter.
It's first quarter plus. So, it'd be probably ten thousand for the whole year. That gives it a little bit of room and you would make adjustments.
The twenty-seven number you gave earlier for Fund Four was for the whole year water bill?
Year-to-date.
Year... Okay, thank you. That startled me. I was like, that was three thousand. That's year-to-date. Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay, so then Fund Twenty-two, there were thirty... There were thirty-three hundred dollars in expenditures there this year. Twenty-two hundred just in the month of October. So, I mean, I would say a thousand dollars would be appropriate there to give us some flexibility.
And then Twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine, the total expenditures this year, thirty-eight, twenty-five. But there's also a four thousand dollar encumbrance. I'd say I'd just make it a thousand dollars as well.
All right.
But still, in the meantime, though, we... So, yeah, so that's for 2019 appropriations. For 2018 appropriations, I will... We'll have another finance committee meeting before the end of the year, and we'll...
I would start with having a conversation with the state. Talk to Anna Mary and see if that's something that they are agreeable to.
Oh, to going back and... Yeah.
Because what you would have to do is go back in and find other keys where you could deduct...
They're there. They're there.
And then add a new line, a whole new key, which is fixed expenses under parks, and then move those into there.
Do you think all of these expenditures in the three funds would be classified as fixed expenditures parks?
No, I just think that... I just said the electric and the water bill are seventy-four hundred key, which is fixed expenses.
Okay.
So, that's... You would have to create a key to pay the water.
Gotcha. The other ones can go in the other keys, okay. Yeah, I'll take that on to...
Sure. I want to make... I want to revisit our discussion.
Sure. I, I, I want to make, um, I want to revisit, um, our discussion on the water, uh, the electric box at the park. I just want to, I want to mention, I agree, I agree about the expenditures and where it was come from, and I, and I agree with the need for that. Um, I just, I don't, I don't remember the situation around that, as far as why he needed to do that, but I just want to make sure we mentioned this. I've mentored youth in this community, I've coached for years, nor would not hold, being down at, uh, being down at the park with no lights, you don't want, you don't want a team down there with fifteen children with no lights. So, I don't know the situation around that or why he did that, but I would appreciate if, if, I don't know what month it was, but maybe he had to do that right away and there was no money to do that. So I wanted to, just to mention that, just to, if he, there was some need for that right away, I could see that being, being urgent. So I just, I just wanted to make sure I, I don't-
And, and in these cases of any emergency that would require a purchase order where there's not money appropriated, then we do have the ability in the auditor's office to issue a then-and-now certificate-
Sure.
For up to thirty-five hundred dollars. So, I mean, it might have exceeded that.
Okay. I just, I just felt like I, I wanted to mention that. I've been down there with fifteen children trying to get the lights on. So, you don't want to be in that situation. So, just wanted to mention that.
I agree with that, and that's part of our, where I'm coming from and saying, can we ask for a plan upfront?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I think that could help us even be mindful, based on your own experience, well, have we considered, does the plan include this? Because I think we've all heard stories of families, teams showing up, and it's not what it needs to be. And we don't even know until after it's happened. And so, I'm in agreement with you, and I think that's a great, um, experience maybe to recall in the discussion, to give some context to-
Yeah.
Why we want to make sure we're putting money where it needs to go.
Yeah, nice job.
Yep. I'm just, yeah, no ill intentions, I think, were ever intended by the safety service director on that.
And I knew that, I knew that.
And I think, yeah, and I'm glad you called it out, and I think that it was a thing that he, they had to get the lights on, because it was, it was in the middle of season and, uh-
I knew that.
The lights were lit. So I'm glad, I appreciate you, uh, calling it out, though, and that we can first express that. It's more about, do we, just more about preserving what little we have left in all of these keys, and, uh, I mean, the-
And I appreciate that, that you're, you're doing that, so, definitely.
Yeah, no, thank you so much. So, excellent, yeah, like I said, I'll reach out to Anna, April and Anna Mary on that specific thing about current year funds, the current year expenditures, and seeing if we can move those over to the general fund this year.
And when you make that request, Mr. Bronson, are you asking, can that be included for our next regular meeting, or just before year-end?
Before year-end. So we'll still work on the 2018 appropriations changes that are here. We won't adjust those, uh, but it, we will go and look to have another appropriations ordinance if they're agreeable.
Okay.
I think one key point that should be made for Tuesday's meeting also is that both of these appropriations for 2018 and 2019 have been approved by the state.
Does this mean you won't be there?
That's correct. I'm at, I'm at the hospital.
Okay.
I think I'm working till eleven.
Excellent, excellent. No, I appreciate you sharing that, because actually I did not hear that they had, I truly agree with it, so.
Yeah, she sent an email today that said everything was okay except for the way Fund Eighty-nine, sixteen hundred dollars.
I'm sorry, that's not sixteen hundred.
One point six million.
There we go.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sixteen hundred, sixteen million.
Hold on, I was going to say, you better be careful what you say.
Let's just make sure we all know, that was a joke. It was a slip of the tongue, and that was a joke. We're clear.
It was me looking at my schedule and trying to speak at the same time.
Would you mind sending that email to the committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any-
Yeah, I'm working one to eleven.
So for the 2019 permanent appropriations, so, you know, we talked about those three funds, are there any other funds that, or any other keys that we had questions about, wanted to?
Fund Seventy-eight is a Robert McCullough fund, so that's one of the ones I'm going to pull the documentation on.
Seventy-eight?
Yeah.
Can we also, and I was going to ask, too, about, as, as I just don't know, the tree board?
Yes.
Is, is that legacy funding? Is that actually an allocation from the general fund? Like-
That's, well, it's not an allocation from the general fund, because in order to have a fund, it has to have a restricted revenue source, so it tends to be donations.
It is donations.
And the person to talk to about that is the president of council, Donna Lee, because she is very involved in the tree board, and she can tell you everything you want to know about it.
Well, what, I guess my reason for asking you is, does it also have a file that states its purpose?
It may.
And, so could you pull that one as well as seventy-eight?
We started a project a few years ago in my office of trying to make a fi-, a file for each fund we had, and to go back and figure out when reven-, revenue started to hit, uh, and look in the years of that year and the year before, through all the ordinances that we had available, and try to find the founding ordinance of each. And we did it for several funds, but then there were funds that the history of the fund exceeded the computerization of the city. And so, to find out a lot of these funds, you know, and then other ones, like the TIF funds, we didn't do that for, because the TIF documents are, you know, this big, or frankly, now we get them on disk. Um, so we weren't putting those in unless there were some specific issues with it.
I just want to build on that comment, or request, rather, so we've, I think it's up to five now.
Yeah, four, twenty-two, twenty-nine, well, seven, so four, seven, twenty-two, twenty-nine, and seventy-eight.
Part of my asking is, I, I think we can become more strategic in how we think about pooling resources, but even thinking about where grants might fill gaps, if we know what our existing game plan is, to the extent we can call it that. So, if that's a project that you think of an intern could help with?
That's, we had somebody like that, which is where our, um, where we started the assembly process, but then we lost them.
I'll make a note to talk to you about that, because I think we have some openness.
Because that is a big, that is a big research. Um, we have other funds that frankly, money has sat in for quite some time, and it's not a lot, but you look at urban development, Fund Fourteen has a thousand dollars in it.
And what do we do with that?
Nothing. Uh, Forty-one, Community Reinvestment Area Fund, Fund Forty-one has five thousand in it, and that was used for, as I recall, there was an analysis done of property grading throughout the city, where a company, there was a grant, and they hired a research team that came through, and each property in the city was graded like green, yellow, red, or was given some scale, and it, it was based on kind of curb appeal. They, they didn't go in and inspect the property, but what was its facade as to the quality of the property? And there was ten thousand dollars there for that, and the bill to do it was five thousand. And so I think five thousand dollars has just sat there. Um, but the question is, what else can you use that for?
That's a good point of clarity. Again, if there's a file, great. I can say, from the economic development and community engagement perspective, we heard, I guess in September, maybe August, about the work HCDC was be, would be doing, uh, to kind of audit what retail space or business opportunities, vacancies there are. I'm not certain that that, that funding covers really, like, doing any mapping, kind of like what Jim just described. So I'm, I would like to go back and check and see, will that just give us a list, like, lists of properties, or would we get some mapping that could be used to guide development opportunities? If, if we're lacking for mapping, then I would like to consider, is that something we might entertain putting dollars towards?
Yep. So, and just note, too, so in any of these funds, like, if you do want to have, like, if council wants to have influence over how they're spent, like, not the general fund, not that we're talking about these smaller funds, then we shouldn't appropriate the fund, I mean, in general, we shouldn't appropriate the fund for them until we give our feedback about how we want, or give our direction about how we want them spent, so.
I think that's where the files come in.
Oh, oh, for sure, for sure, so.
But I agree with you, once we know what we're maybe bound to or not bound to.
So there could be additional funds that we decide that we want to appropriate zero. So, I'm actually curious, I mean, I would personally like to, you know, I'm just going to throw it out there, do you all, by chance, have any availability to meet as a finance committee again before the council meeting on Tuesday? So whether it be Tuesday at six thirty, or Monday at seven, just to, once we get the information on some of these funds, we'll just kind of come back, have a game plan, and-
Yeah, I could, I could meet either, either one of those days, yep.
Yeah, Monday is the only day I have off. Tomorrow and Monday, other than that I'm working. And I think they're all till eleven. Yeah, they're all eleven to eleven, or one to eleven.
But Monday does work for you?
Monday I'm off, yeah.
I could do, I could do Monday.
Would you all prefer six or seven on Monday? Six o'clock or seven?
Um, it's, it's up to you. Either one's fine.
I'd, I'd prefer six.
Six.
Six, okay.
Yeah, this has been a good discussion, and I'm just thinking, if it's going to be this long, not that that's bad, let's just start early.
I don't think it's going to be that long. There was a lot to go over.
I want to ensure, though, like, once we do some research on some of those other funds, uh, that we can, um, come back together, and then also have Mr. Clark hopefully here as well.
That'd be great.
To write feedback.
You know, it's going to be what is available now, and then starting to research on those funds, especially those other ones I mentioned, um, trying to find out when they were founded. Because s- some of these, like, let's say Fund Fourteen, Fund Forty-three, you know, there's a few funds where money has just sat there. Fund Seventy-six, that was there when I started.
Yeah.
And nobody's utilized, and it's not a lot. I mean, there's a thousand dollars in a fund. Um, what can we use that for?
Yeah, so, and the thing to me is, so if we don't know, if you, if you as the auditor don't, not sure what that fund should be used for, then I think that the administration probably wouldn't know either. So appropriating these things, once we figure out that we don't know at zero, this might be a better idea than-
I wouldn't say it's not that we don't know, it's that we haven't researched that thousand dollars for the urban development fund, because it was there before we started. And these typically are grants, and somebody will have a grant, and it'll be a ten thousand dollar grant to go and do something, and there's an individual in the city that's in charge of that grant. And then they only spend nine thousand dollars, and there's a thousand dollars left. Well, that money should maybe go back to the grant. Other times, it can be freed to use for other things and taken into the general fund just as revenue, and other times, it has been, uh, there are things that are restricted and say, no, you, you can only use it for, you know, let's say you've got something to develop a park, you can only use it in that park, or in a park in the city. Um, and so there were funds like that that we had researched, but these have been through audit, too. I mean, we've been audited multiple times, and, you know, they'll look, and they've commented on these small funds before, and they're like, well, you should get whoever administers that grant to look at what they can do. Well, who administers that grant?
So the files don't have grant administration in them?
We have to pull the file and see. Some of them would.
Yeah.
Some of them would have, like, the grant paperwork, or anything that was available that we had, we put in those files. But like I said, some of these are old, you know?
Old, yeah.
Uh, and they've had five hundred dollars sitting in it for a very long time. But again, it's going to be restricted, and the reason we keep it there is, you know, even when the state auditors come through, from our audit standpoint, when we are audited, not the LGS that administers local government services that we've talked about our appropriations, but when we get our outside audits, they look at these things, and they're like, well, have you used this appropriately or not? So.
So excited to talk about ideas.
Excellent, yep. So, okay, uh, do we feel good, though, about the 2019 appropriations for the moment, uh, other than the three funds that we have established? And actually, I'd like to just add, for the changes, uh, Mr. Stith, Fund Seventy-eight, the Robert McCullough FG, I don't know what the FG stands for, but-
Robert M.
To take it down as well.
Yeah, take that down. I would say, we spent four hundred and-
You put a thousand in the others.
Yeah. I mean, well, we spent four sixty-six in that fund so far this year, must date, so I would just put five hundred for that one, if that's okay with you all. We've only spent five hundred dollars for the whole year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, excellent. And then these, some of these other funds, too, so, uh, yeah, we'll come back with some recommendations, if there's any other funds like that on Monday to talk about. But-
Remember, there are funds that are zeros, that are, there are some funds that are zeros, like when you look at Forty-seven Fenwick Park Nature Works Grant Fund. And, you know, you get a grant and establish a fund for that grant, the grant is used, and now that fund sits there as zero.
How can we get this off our li-
We can't, because if we do, it eliminates the history of it.
But it's a grant, and if the grant's gone to zero, can we be okay with not having that history?
Or at least on this cash position, on the cash report, well-
It, it shows up on the cash position report. Now, it doesn't have to show up on the appropriations, we could just leave it blank, but what we did, that's where we established the capital projects funds. There's capital projects one, two, and three, so we get a grant for a nature works grant or a park grant, we could put that in a key under Capital Projects Fund One, subheading Fenwick Park, and that way, we have, that's what those funds are for.
What's the difference between one, two, and three?
Just having three funds that we could use. Because there was, if there's three projects going on, we wanted three different funds that we could use for our capital projects.
Which now they would put them in subkey, like, sub funds. They would not create three separate funds. However, that's how they did it back then.
Well, we created three funds then, because we had three projects, and we didn't want to put them all in one key underneath.
But like, if that same thing happened today, you would not, like, in that, we had three different projects like that, and we wanted to separate them. There's no way that we would create three funds today for that.
Would we create three keys under one fund?
If, if the revenue source allowed for that. Uh, the problem is, is if you have two active projects both being tracked under separate keys under the same fund, they might have a problem with that. Whereas, if you have, but once one's closed out, it doesn't matter, right?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
So the idea here is, we can look on the cash position report and know, Capital Project One, Capital Projects Fund One is for fixing this street, and the other one is for Fund Two, is fixing the parks. And just looking at the cash position report, you could see the revenue and expenditures for each one of those projects. But then, once that project's closed, you start a new subheading key for another project. But we didn't want to mix all that money together in one fund.
So maybe for the ones that are grants that are no longer, you're saying we can eliminate the title and just leave it at zero?
No, you, well, I mean, the thing is, it's always going to show up on here, on the cash position.
Yes, but for this?
You could just, if you had, do not have, so I've, I've, I've made this before, where I said, all the keys that were zero, we left out. Because if you didn't appropriate money there, then automatically it was zero. But then the problem with that was, we had a couple of keys where when we put and entered this into our system, if it didn't say zero, it took the appropriations from the prior year and stuck them on there.
Oh.
And so we had to be very cautious, and, and so-
And I'm fine with it saying zero on the appropriations thing, that's no big deal. It's more just the fact that I, when we move, so, hopefully in the financial recovery plan, too, one of the items that we've talked, I don't know if we've talked about it here, but we've talked about potentially at council, is that we need a new financial system. And I'm not, let's not go into all that now, but when we move to that system, I'm hoping that we can get, like, there's a way in that system to close out funds, so they just don't appear on our reports anymore. Like, if they haven't been used in ten years, and it's zero, 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 zero for ten years, you know?
Yeah, as long as we have the ability to go back and look at what it was eleven years ago.
Right, oh, yeah, that's-
Because you just, you can't, you can't erase that. Um, and we do have a number of funds that just since going into fiscal emergency, that we've eliminated funds. So you have the EMS fund, you have recreation fund, uh, and those just sit there with zeros. But we can't delete them.
Yeah, and at least those have some history, and like, if you look at the auditor's report or what have you, I mean, there's, I'm not as worried about those, I'm worried about these, like, grant funds. I mean, we get a grant, we have to create a fund.
There's also things, like, you look at the Council on Aging Fund, there, there was a time when we had regular money from Council on Aging that helped pay for feeding the seniors at the, uh, community center.
Didn't it just get it?
But then they changed the regulations of what would be required to get that money, because you have to have, like, a full-time cook and inspections done and everything else. So, we no longer were eligible for that money, so that key sits there. Now, what happens if, five years from now, Council on Aging says, hey, we've got this other plan for you, well, you've got that fund, so.
That's not a, that's not good management, though, to have, to keep a fund open just in case we may one day get funding from that same source again.
Well, you have to keep it open because it has a history.
I, I hear you on that, I hear you on that, I'm just saying.
Because the goal hopefully would be to find a new financial system that allows us to be savvy enough to run reports for just what is active.
Yes.
Yeah, and essentially, okay, perfect.
I would imagine that in, in talking to the company that came in and that does our current system, that that's something we would be able to do. Because they were really talking about a variety of levels of customization for running reports, where now we have basically cookie-cutter ways of doing it.
But we'd have to make, yeah, and just the only, the only- But we'd have to make, yeah, and just the only, the only concern, kind of like what you were saying, or you might have alluded to this, but as long as the thing, if activity does then happen and that, that it appears automatically on the reports, then it's fine, you know, because, but, yeah, I would, that sounds like, that sounds good. So let's try to wrap this up. So we've got the four changes so far for the 2019 appropriations. We'll talk about it again on Monday, call me at 6 o'clock. Were there any other items that you had for us?
Nope.
Okay, so we talked about the Norwood, the last agenda item was the Norwood Community Television. It was alluded to by the auditor in the second agenda item that we, they're fixing the PACE Telecommunications essentially to make sure that we can pay out the funds that, for Cincinnati Bell.
There has to be a new agreement made between NCTV and the city that states that all of the revenue that comes in from cable resources goes directly into the PACE Telecommunication Fund. The current one says money has to be held back till the end of the year, which is a cash flow issue to them, and frankly, has not benefited the city in any way up to this point. So my recommendation is writing a new agreement.
Okay. And so with this agreement, and actually, there is, there are things happening right now with the agreement. I think that Tyler from NCT is writing, putting some kind of drafting together for the agreement. I think, though, that council should ensure that we really look at this closely because one, there's a couple of things we'll need to make sure that's in there, I think. We need to make sure it's a back out. So like, if we decide in the future that that's not where we want, either cable television revenue or the Cincinnati Bell, I guess, or sorry, the time, like, spectrum revenue or the Cincinnati Bell in the future, we would want the option to amend it in the future because it's the city's money. We are, at this current time, allocating it to, we have chosen that we want to allocate it to Norwood Community Television. Well, maybe they just turn their system off one day, or I don't know, something could happen where we decide that we don't want to, a future council decides they don't want to do that anymore. So I think that this agreement should have that in there. And then we should also talk about, since we are now giving them more funding, potentially getting more services. So right now, it only says in the agreement, from what I was told, or from my recollection, that they broadcast council meetings. But they've also, of course, been broadcasting committee meetings as well, and so we want to make sure that those are in there.
Other, I would say other events, too. Tons of things with the schools.
Exactly. Oh, yeah, well, the schools would, oh, yeah, so if we want to ensure that they still broadcast the schools, I would say that the schools could probably work out their own agreement with them because they give them, they lease them or they have some agreement about, with the space. But if this city council, like, feels like we want to ensure that that happens, if we feel like we want to step in and say, "Hey, yes, protect the schools." So the schools are already gonna be looking out for themselves because it's their space that NCT leases. Sure, we can add that in there. And then potentially any additional city services. So I think that potentially we may want to ask them to, you know, have so many hours of audio, you know, maybe videoing of, like, at the water department, they could make a video for us on how to, for people to access their online portal and how to pay the online portal. Or there could be videos on, just how do you go pay your ticket, whatever the, the things might be. Or there could just be, like, maybe an update from the mayor, you know, maybe he wants to do a, whoever, this mayor or future mayor, whoever, wants to do, like, an update from their office and let the citizens know what's going on, then, you know, potentially if we put some stuff in there about having, you know, with this increased revenue, the increased funds that we're gonna be giving, that we get a few extra things for service, I think that would be a prudent idea to do, so. And I'm sure that if we ask them to do some of those things, I'm sure they probably would help right now. However, you know, not everybody, maybe not every future director of NCT is gonna be as great as Tyler is, so, well, I just feel like that we should, if we're giving more money, we should ask for, potentially ask for more services that they are able to provide. And that's something that we'll talk with them about, too.
Do you have a, Mr. Bonzal, do you have a sense of when this needs to be, my understanding is this is gonna be presented to council on our next regular meeting? Is the expectation this gets considered to the point of a yes or no?
Well, I, I don't have any expectation that it's gonna be on the next council meeting. Is that what you were...
I mean, ideally, we'd like to have it done by January 1st, just so that we don't have to hold that portion back. But that being said, that if it was February when you pass it, we would just back out anything that we've held to the beginning of the year. But under the current agreement, we have to hold 40% back, and that does harm their cash flow.
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. I, I remember drafting up this a while back, and to my understanding, we weren't giving them any more, that basically before, we cut, we did it three times a year. And now, instead of doing that, we're giving them all of it. So it was my understanding that wasn't an increase, it was just, we'd given them all at once. So that was my understanding. If I'm wrong, please correct me or...
It also had to do with another provider coming in.
Okay.
And the language of the agreement of what went to PACE was only dealing with the one provider.
Yes.
And the new provider coming in was just going to the general fund and not being given to NCT. So council came in and said, "We want this other provider's money to also go to NCT."
Okay.
And so that's where essentially the increase was. As far as a percentage being held back to the end of the year to be used by the city for any expenses related to it, you know, that was put in there initially when the initial plan was made to fund NCT with that revenue source. But we didn't want to give all the revenue there because if there was an expense to the city to maintain those services, they wanted to have that money, and then at the end of the year, they just give it back to them. Well, the problem is that hurts their cash flow. And if we've never had to use that money we're holding back, why do it that way?
Sure. And just to reiterate, you said it. If, if ever I or someone else would go to them and ask them if they wanted to use their facilities, as far as I know, I've never heard anyone tell me they've said no. So they're very, you know, you know, you mentioned that, you mentioned that, so I think they're very helpful and I, you know, and you're, you know. So thanks for the clarification there, I...
Yeah, so...
I have a couple of concerns, but first I'll say, I think the considerations you raised, Mr. Bonzal, are good ones to be discussed. I think we could start discussing if it, if the letter does show up or even if we want to discuss as part of our report out on Tuesday, that would be helpful. I do like imagining what more could be a benefit to the city. I think what concerns me most is that if, if the funding sources for NCT are a combination of the city and the school, we could maybe be really helped to understand the school's point of view in terms of how they are ensuring some of the funding. And I say that because we're a part of the picture, we're not the whole picture, and while we might be real clear on what we want our money to achieve, collectively, the school and the city are creating expectations for residents, that they can see games, they can see council, they can see these other things recorded. And I think we'd have a very short-sighted discussion if we don't create the opportunity to talk with the school, to at least think about if the city were to cut back to, say, its original 40% for the combination of new providers, does that then throw NCT into another lurch, even if the school continues to do their part? So I think, I think it's worthwhile if we, if the goal from the auditor's perspective is, let's pass something before January 1, preferably. I think it's worthwhile to think about who from the school might we need to talk to, get a point of view from. Because I, I think where we started in 18 was, our part, the potential funding from the city and how we were funding was creating such a strain for the organization, they were facing some difficult challenges. And I, I'm just aware of how critical it is to have as much, not just continuity, but flexibility when it comes to funding like that. So I just want to raise that. I think the ideas for improvement are great and maybe even could be a really robust discussion with NCT, maybe asking the board chair to come back and maybe asking a representative from the school to talk with this committee, or even to council, if that's the way we want to pursue, given the timeline. Because we're, we're talking about a resource that the whole city uses and even people outside the city, and I, I just want to be mindful of the impact our choice is gonna have.
You bring up a, many good points there. And so one of the questions I have is, how do we want to, as like, as finance committee, what's our recommendation for how we kind of deal with this new, the new contract that's coming? I personally, I'm okay with it, finance committee being the one, if the rest of council's okay with it, I'm okay with us being the one that kind of reviews it and pushes it and keeps it moving through since it mostly deals with finances and how they're, which funds, which items they're paid for and when they're paid. So with these extra things, though, sort of things that we might want to add to it, so when it comes to ensuring that all of the city things are recorded, you know, the video consulting services when it comes to, you know, videos that might be made. And I know that anybody can go to NCT to, from what I've heard, to like, they'll, and they'll help them, but some of the things I'm thinking of are things where they would come to us and help, you know, do more outside the studio, so...
So, I'm wondering...
Yeah. Are you, oh, okay.
Yeah, it is cold on the side. Hearing you say that, Mr. Bonzal, my first thought is, I think in the past we were able to see a budget of their needs. Maybe with that, could we, could we go ahead and begin a conversation, just requesting, like, what are the basic services that a basic budget allows versus a fully funded budget? What does that allow? I think that's pretty typical, at least from my, my grant world experience, you know, what can you do if you're fully funded versus 75%, et cetera? Like, organizations have a way of thinking about that. And maybe we ask them to think about that just for what they provide to the city, if we feel like that's more in our purview and we're not able to have a broader conversation. That's something I don't know, though, if they make a budget and delineate services based on who funds them.
Yeah, I mean, I think it could be up to, you know, when it comes to the purview of what we want to look at, I mean, I think it's whatever we decide that we want to look at. I mean, essentially...
Point of clarity, when I say purview, I mean, I don't know how they manage their money. That's what I mean. So if maybe they already itemize, "We do this with the money we get from the city" versus "We do this based on other revenue streams." So I don't know if adding more or having a clause that says we're gonna, at some point in time, leave the opportunity to decline what that looks like.
You want to just ask me?
Oh, yeah, I forgot you said you could come out. Come on up and tell us the truth. We got a seat just for you.
Okay.
While you talk to him, I'm gonna run down and make these changes.
I'm gonna make the meeting go longer, isn't it?
No, you might speed up the meeting.
Yeah, and we probably will, I mean, I was gonna say, it's getting late already, so we probably, we can ask a few questions, but let's just plan on having another committee meeting.
Well, I think maybe we just ask for input on what could be a good next step.
Yeah.
What could be a good next step? Well, my, what I was gonna do is, my next, actual next step was to send what I have written up, which is just based on the last contract, with all the old stuff taken out or updated, and without any mention of the school, since that's a separate agreement we have with them now. And it's, it is very vague about, I don't think it mentions even council meetings, it says we provide governmental access to you, which means whatever you guys make it mean. Now, my thought, yeah, my thought is that if you keep the contract vague like that, and then, I mean, if you want to have a, you know, if I show up or whoever's in charge of access at the time shows up once a year even and talks, and you guys talk about what you guys want done or whatever, you know, kind of a meeting, that would be cool. And we are open to doing things with city departments, that would be great. It's just, it's really just based on how much time we have.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So we try to fill our time best we can. The school doesn't actually provide any funding, they provide the lease. They, they provided some equipment this year. But as far as the income goes, it's just what you guys see coming through the city.
That is, as a point of clarity, the entire budget is just what comes through the city.
For the most part, yes. There's a few, we were able to get some money from, through the school, through avenues for success, for the, the, the stuff we offer, the clubs and the camps. And there's a teacher that, over there in the middle school, that has some programs going where she gets grants. Occasionally, she'll pay us for our, our time. But, I mean, you're talking a tiny amount versus the whole thing.
Just to be clear...
Yeah.
Is it fair to say, or accurate, rather, the majority of the services you offer to the school are covered by what the city funds you to do?
Yes, because what the city funds basically is the employees.
Okay, thank you. That's so helpful. I think, as we continue to discuss, part of my concern was it...
Yeah.
We, aside from you telling us, didn't know.
And basically with, with the, without the city Cincinnati Bell money this year, we would have had to gone down to one employee. Right now, we're still at two full-times and one part-time who does our, our bookkeeping for us. And one way to look at it is extra money coming into us. But the other way to look at it is that Time Warner was here, they were the only show in town. Cincinnati Bell came in, some of that Time Warner money went over to Cincinnati Bell. So it's still the same amount of sort of cable, but it's coming from another. So it's a different way to kind of look at it.
Yeah, I, well, I was gonna say, I tried looking at this in the past, and I'll say that it was hard for me to draw that, when I looked at it, it was harder for me, it was harder for me to draw that correlation. I mean, there was a little bit of a correlation, but it wasn't direct, because we went from, like, 2012, like, getting maybe a thousand, I mean, I'm just throwing these numbers out, it was, I'm just trying to get magnitude numbers, from like a thousand in maybe 2012 to like 10,000 in 2014 to like, then 60,000, like...
Right.
Again, I don't know those exact numbers, but the magnitude is what I was trying to get at. They just, you know, went up quickly.
And all the while, if you look at the...
And Spectrum didn't go down that fast, though.
They went down a, a bit, but you're right, they did jump up. I don't understand the reason for that, I don't, I'm not sure.
And it's hard for us to compare it, actually, anyways, when you look at the, the past finances, because Spectrum, when Spectrum took over, they refused, Time Warner used to send a check to, for 60% of it, they would send a check to you all and they would send a check to the city. So we would only ever see...
You would always see that.
That 40% that we were going to give them at the end of the year, we would never see the 60% that they were getting. But then when Spectrum took over, from my understanding, they did, they weren't writing two checks, they were gonna write one check and you all figure it out on your own, essentially, is what my understanding is.
Right, exactly, it was very confusing.
So it's very hard even when we look, it's hard to look back at it anyways, so I have no idea who's right on this and it doesn't really, you know, I don't, it was just, it doesn't matter at this point, but...
But my, my next step was to send that to the law, law office.
Okay.
And then in, in terms of, like, talking about what, if you guys want more services or, we're always agreeable to, to try to get, I mean, that's what we do.
Are you able to itemize what you do? Not like attach a dollar amount to, like, filming council, but like, what are the services?
Itemize the services?
Yeah.
Like, list out...
I mean, not right now, but like, as, as we consider the new agreement...
I mean, I guess I could, I could, I could do that in a, it would take some...
That would be super helpful, because obviously you're doing a lot, but I don't, I don't know that we, other than the person, know clearly that's a cost, like, have a sense of what is the value.
Sure, sure.
And not just to the city, but to the schools, too. I mean, I really would like to know...
Right, I was gonna say to the city.
Yeah, to like the global city, not like city government.
Right, the whole.
Yeah, so I think it would be interesting to, I agree to see that. Okay, I do think, though, that we should probably continue this conversation, though, at a different finance committee meeting, so...
I got one thing, are you turning, like, if, if someone was to come to you and need help, need something filled, are you turning people away, or is there a lot of, like, are you saying, no, I can't do that?
Uh, it hasn't, it hasn't, it happened once with the schools, actually, recently, and I think we were able to get them equipment, and they were able to tape it themselves.
Okay.
But it hasn't happened too much, we really try to do our best, and if we can't get out and tape it, we'll send somebody with equipment.
That's kind of what I, exactly what I thought, so I've never had any issues at all, I've been available, so, that's kind of what I thought, I didn't think you were turning people away, so.
Yeah, and I agree with that, and I think, though, adding some, like, different things that might, you know, we kind of can agree to, to provide, maybe we put, you know, fifty hours of video consulting services for, I don't, maybe thirty, whatever it might be, for projects that aren't just like government access meetings, something in there so that at least the city leaders in the future know, like, what they could, like, what we agreed to at the time. And then, we could still put in there, and other government access that both parties can agree on, that can, that won't overwhelm, whatever that wording might be, but, I mean, it's more just the fact that I think there's so much more that this partnership can have and can do than it's, we're currently doing, and, and, yeah, I just think that the PACE telecommunications, Norwood Community Television, I think they're just a huge asset to the city, and I feel like, just, as just like Leslie said, when we're trying to get the inventory, there's so much more, so, for both of us, so, I'm looking forward to that. But I'll get with you about scheduling another meeting, and give you some heads up about it, so...
Thank you for having me.
Sorry to intrude on your meeting.
No, I appreciate it.
I feel weird crossing over.
Yeah, yeah, so for anybody watching, that's the gentleman that's actually, like, recording our meetings. Normally, it's Steve, I'm not, I guess Steve's out today, but we have Tyler here, so. Okay, so it sounds like we've got quite a bit of things to work on offline, individual people have tasks with, so we'll work on that. We're going to meet again Monday, six o'clock, so I'll have that sent out here tomorrow. If you have anything else, questions, or anything else you want added to the agenda? Is there anything we want added to the agenda besides the, well, I'll just put city finances, but the 2019 appropriations?
Public comments.
In public comments?
Yeah!
And if we have enough time to do the, the community television at that point, we, we will, but I imagine that that conversation will probably be delayed until early December, so. We can work things, the tasks that we have to do, but...
Oh, yes.
I don't know if we necessarily need to talk about that again. Cool. Well, thank you all so much for being here.
Thank you, nice job.
Just as a point of clarity, though, if we're not talking about it again, are we ready to report out on that, or is that going to stay here until we see the letter? Because it sounded like the letter could be going to the law department tomorrow.
We should talk about the report. I do think that we should report out that finance committee is going to keep working on that, in the sense of that we're going to take up the contract.
The PACE.
The PACE telecommunications contract, yes, so I personally believe that that should be reported out, so that it's known to all of council, that, that's our intention. Then if they decide that, somebody decides they want to make a motion or do something different with it, they're welcome to do that, but I think that most of that contract is about the finance, about the way that we pay them and how and when, so, most of the changes to that, so.
I would suggest, I'm so sorry.
No, please, go on.
I would suggest we put it on the agenda for Monday as well, and just make sure we're still in the same place.
Okay.
Because if we get any new information before then, we might want to consider it before Tuesday's meeting.
That's fine, I will add that to the agenda.
And if there's no updates, we can just say that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll fly through it like we did with public comments today, so...
Yeah, so do we have to actually do two report out, since we'll have two meetings?
There will be two different reports.
Oh, that's right, well, hopefully, we'll have another member at the other one, too.
Yes, and I was going to say, and Mr. Clark, for anybody watching, Mr. Clark, when I specifically, when I asked for, you know, today, it was either Monday or Tuesday, can you make it? Mr. Clark could have made it yesterday, but other committee members, including myself, it was, today was a better day, so he let me know way upfront that he was not going to be here, and I just, you know, I had to apologize to him because I had to pick a day, so the auditor was more available today, so, we will, he was, yeah, definitely not here by any choice of his, you know, not here by any choice of his own, he already had commitments.
My last comment, strictly procedurally, procedure-wise, am I saying that right?